Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, August 17, Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for joining us tonight. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our role, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Brecky? Erickson?
Here.
Jensen? Kylie?
Here.
Knightzert?
Here.
Selberg?
All right. With us tonight to give our invocation, welcome back Pastor Randall Gearing from Our Savers Lutheran. Pastor Gearing, thanks for being here. I'd ask that you stand for his invocation, and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this practice that the council has of invoking God's presence, of inviting divine wisdom to reign over these proceedings, reflects values that are rooted both in humility and reverence. Each meeting, you begin your work together by recognizing that you not only need each other, but you also need help from outside yourselves. When one occupies a seat of power and carries great responsibility, this is a good place to begin. So tonight, I offer to you words from a 17th-century Carmelite monk, whose name is Brother Lawrence, that suggests that this practice of beginning your work with prayer is a practice that may continue throughout your meeting, and indeed throughout all of life. Listen to these modern paraphrases of his teaching. "I don't practice any particular prayer discipline. I have no specific technique I use to meditate. If every moment I am consciously practicing love, doing all things for God's sake, then I don't need to worry about these spiritual methods. My only prayer practice is attention. I carry on a habitual, silent, and secret conversation with God that fills me with overwhelming joy. When we walk in the presence of God, the busiest moment of the day is no different from the quiet of a prayer altar. Even amid noise and clutter, while people's voices are coming at you from all directions asking for your help with many different things, you can possess God with the same serenity as if you were on your knees in church. The divine presence occupies the here and now. If you are not aware of this," he writes, "become so." So trusting that God is with us now and always, let us pray. God, amid all the work that will be accomplished this night, amid the debate that will be offered, and the votes that will be taken, amid the sharing of dreams, and the hearing of concerns, amid everything that this evening will be, make us aware of your loving presence. Open us to your leading, and empower this council to serve for the good of all who call this city home. With gratitude for all your blessings, we pray. Amen."
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Pastor Gearing, for being here on your birthday, it turns out. So happy birthday to you. We'll move on with item four, which is our consent agenda. Any changes to be made to our consent agenda?
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie to approve that. Discussion on that motion? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We'll move on to item 39. That's our regular agenda to approve tonight. Look for a motion there.
Move to approve Erickson.
Second.
All right. A motion, a second, by Erickson and Kylie to approve that. Any
Mr. Mayor.
Discussion there, Councilor Erickson?
I'll make a motion to amend by moving item 60 to immediately follow item 49, and to amend by moving items 62 and 63 to immediately follow item 44.
Second.
All right. Motion, a second on that. Any discussion, council? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Back to the main motion as amended.
I'll make a motion to amend by moving items 58 and 55 to immediately following item 56.
Second.
All right. Motion, a second on that. Just making a note here. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that amendment passes. So we're back to the main motion now as amended twice. Any other amendments here? All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote on this, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that one passes seven to zero. Before we move on with our agenda, I just want to remind everyone how public input will work for tonight. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. During general public input, at the end of the meeting, comments will be limited to no more than three minutes per person, and should be on topics that did not involve agenda items we covered earlier in the evening. So with that being said, we'll move on to item 40.
Item 40 is a new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license and new 2021 retail wine and cider license for Hagry Ethiopian Restaurant, 2113 South Minnesota Avenue, with conditional use permit 9802-2019, being approved on March 6, 2019. Item 41, a new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license and new 2021 retail wine and cider license for SSA Group LLC, SSA Great Plains Zoo, 805 South Kewanis Avenue, CUP, not required. Item 42 is a new 2021 retail wine and cider license for Jackie's Burrito Express, 2315 West 12th Street, with conditional use permit 7632-2017, being approved on December 6, 2017. Item 43 is a special one-day liquor license for KJTLLC to be operated at The Social, 301 South Thompson, for an outdoor event on August 21, 2021. Item 44 is a special one-day malt beverage license for Tea Slat Incorporated to be operated at Kirkabee Over Stadium, 2700 South Lake Avenue, for a football game on September 4, 2021.
Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening. Jamie Palmer with Licensing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for items 40 through 44.
All right. Anyone from the public here to speak on any of these items tonight? All right, councilors, you got any questions for Jamie here?
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie to approve these items. Discussion on that motion? All right, hearing none. Let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that item passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item 62, moved by amendment, a resolution creating tax incremental District Number 25, City of Sioux Falls, private applicant Mayor Sharapatu, Q0ZBLC.
Evening, Jeff.
Good evening. Jeff Akoff, Planning and Development Services. Sorry about the little technical delay there. Thank you, Councilor Erickson, for making the motion to amend the agenda so we could take these items in order that makes logical sense as we move through the TIF 25 that we'll present tonight. As Dustin did a couple weeks ago, I'll present all three items, and then we'll go back and you'll move on them individually. I also wanted to remind you that Jeff Scherzlich is here tonight, so if you have specific questions of the developer, he's here and available for that as well. As a quick reminder, TIF 25 is for the Sharapa Place development, which is actually three buildings. Sharapa Place, which is building number two, which is directly north of the existing Sharapa Building. It'll be connected by a 5,000-square-foot length. It'll be used for conference space during the day by the tenants, and then available to the public on nights and weekends. Building three, which will be a mixed-use building with retail, residential, as well as wrapping around a parking ramp structure, as well as building four is also a wrapped parking ramp with retail and residential around it. That parking is needed to accommodate his tenants from the residential and from the office and retail that's being done there, as well as additional surface lot parking. Tonight, we're asking you to consider three items for this process. Number one is a resolution to create the TIF district of TIF Number 25. That's item 62. A resolution to approve the project plan, which is item 63. And then we'll have the second reading of the development agreement that Dustin walked through two weeks ago with you. It also includes the option to exercise, or the ability to exercise the option to purchase the land as well, and it's a second reading and final reading for that particular item. The proposed tax district is shown outlined in yellow on the overhead here, includes this development site, as well as Sharapa One, and also, as you'll notice, it goes east on Sixth Street, and that is done in case we need to bring utilities from Weber over to the site. That way, it's included in the district, so we can do that. They're still working on which way the water will come, but that provides that option for us. Current property taxes on that property with Sharapa, $145,000 a year. The TIF request is $25,375,592 plus the cost of financing. It'll create, it's being used for site work, for the parking structures, for the two parking structures, for the extension of Reed Street to provide connectivity between Sixth and Eighth Street, and for some utility relocation. When the project's completed, the estimated property tax valuation, or property taxes will be at $1.9 million. Item 63 will be the TIF plan. It's attached to the development agreement, but it talks about the type of public works that will be there. There was economic feasibility study done to make sure the increment will be able to pay off the loan, the estimated project cost, the impact it shows, which is the move from $450,000 to $1.9 million, and then talking about the methods of financing. And again, this is a developer's TIF, where Jeff will be taking on the debt, Jeff and his partners. The project plan also talks about, according to state law, talks about the existing uses and conditions, the proposed improvements, change of zoning, which there is no change, and some of the other things on there as far as location of persons is not occurring, so those do not apply, but they're part of the plan by state law. The TIF Development Act, or Development Agreement, for which this is the second reading, it's item 45. Again, it's a developer-funded TIF, which means that Jeff and his partners are taking on the debt. It's $25 million TIF, plus cost of financing. Costs are capped and limited up to 5%. Requirements to the developer, they complete the improvements, that the parking is available on nights and weekends. Actually follows whatever the Sioux Falls parking policy is at the time. They'll complete Reed Street, and they'll be responsible for the financing repayment, and you should know that Jeff Scherzlich and his partner have signed personal guarantees on the project. The $25 million is out of a total of about $56 million of eligible expenses for the TIF. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Again, there are three separate actions to create the district, to approve the project plan, and then to approve the development agreement.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item here tonight? Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. Joe Batchelor with Downtown Sioux Falls Incorporated. A couple of weeks ago, I spoke to the importance of this project from the impact that it's going to have on the community, and I think we all get that. This is pretty transformational. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to really create some of the most productive land in Sioux Falls, and that's what we like. We like that because it creates ROI, creates opportunity for the city to invest in more quality-of-life opportunities for our citizenry. And, you know, personally, I want to see more productive land, not just downtown, but throughout the city. It's a good project in that regard. We can't do that without the TIF approval that you're considering here tonight, because this TIF district will provide a deferment of some of the risks that the developer is going to take on. You know, Jeff, Mr. Akoff said that this was a developer TIF, and that means that the developer is taking on the risk, okay? I want to nip a narrative in the bud. I think that there's been a lot of, some people out there that have said that it's a giveaway to developers. It's not a giveaway to developers. Maybe in some cities and other states, but here in Sioux Falls, we do a good job with TIF, okay? And this allows the developer to defer a portion of the risk, so that we can create a public benefit where we have enhanced public spaces, where we have parking to support this type of development. This is good for Sioux Falls. This allows the developer to pursue the vision, you know, a developer who has the means and the courage to pursue this vision, to execute this plan. Folks, this is good for the long term of Sioux Falls, and so this is not a giveaway to a developer. This is an opportunity to create more productive land for the city of Sioux Falls and enhance the quality of life for our citizenry. So on behalf of the DTSF Board, I urge you to support this TIF. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right, councilors, you got any questions for Mr. Akoff or Jeff, who is here? Mr. Scherzlich is in attendance?
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Jensen.
Okay, we have a motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen to approve 62. Discussion on this one, council? Go ahead, councillor.
Just, we'll make it very brief, because we have three items, all the same, and so my sentiments are all the same, that when Mr. Scherzlich says he's going to do something, he does it. Looks great, follows through, and truly is a cheerleader for our downtown community. And so thank you for your investment, and your investors investing in this as well, and I look forward to the projects to come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Other discussion on this item tonight? All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that one passes seven to zero. Item 63, moved by amendment.
Item 63 is a resolution approving the project plan for tax incremental District Number 25, City of Sioux Falls, private applicant Sharapatu, Q0ZBLC.
Jeff?
Thank you, Jeff. Back off again. Just information as presented, just here for any further questions.
All right. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors, any questions on this one?
Move approval. Jensen?
Second, Brecky.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Brecky to approve item 62. Any discussion on that motion? All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
That one passes seven to zero. Move to item 45.
Item 45 is a second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, establishing the tax increment revenues to be collected and authorizing the payment of tax increment revenues to Sharapatu, Q0ZBLC, in accordance with the development agreement for tax incremental District Number 25, City of Sioux Falls, private applicant Sharapatu, Q0ZBLC.
Thank you. Again, just available for questions. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Anyone who would like to speak on this one tonight? All right, councilors, any final questions on this item?
Move approval.
Move to approve.
Oh, we got three of them there. I'm going to give it to councillor Sale, seconded by councillor Brecky on that. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that one passes seven to zero. Item 46.
Item 46 is a second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City by amending Chapter 39, Personnel Regulations and Benefits, Retirement and Pensions. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Bill.
Mayor, City Council, Midlothoal, Human Resources. This is a pretty straightforward amendment to Chapter 39, to the enumerated holidays of the city of Sioux Falls, adding the holiday Juneteenth Day. It is a federal holiday that was recently recognized. We weren't able to move as quickly as the government did when they announced it to recognize it this year. This action would allow us to recognize it in 2022 going forward. It's the first federal holiday that's been added since about 1983, and the significance of Juneteenth, obviously, is to recognize the month and the day that the emancipation reached the slaves in 1865. Would urge your support. Happy to answer any questions on the item.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this one tonight? All right, councilors, you have any questions for Bill here?
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie to approve this. Any discussion? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Next item.
Item 47 is a second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City by amending Chapter 51, Utility Rates and Charges Pertaining to Water Customers Outside the City of Sioux Falls. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Nick Borns. I'm Principal Engineer for Water at the City of Sioux Falls. Here today for a second reading for update to ordinance 51.054, and what we're asking for is inclusion of five properties to in-city rates for city water. This is a second reading. I guess I don't have any new information, but just to kind of summarize, we have an upcoming project on 57th Street from Veterans Parkway to Six Mile Road, and that is affecting the Link County Rural Water. We have worked with Link County Rural Water to basically eliminate a duplicate line, and then in doing so, we will be providing water to the five properties shown in the exhibit. I'd be happy to take any questions anybody might have.
All right. Thank you, Nick. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to item 47 here tonight? All right, councilors, any questions for Nick here? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
That one passes seven to zero. Item 48, please.
Item 48 is the second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations, parks and recs, $800,000, general fund transfers to sales use tax fund, $3,012,500, fire rescue, $2.5 million, parks and recreation, $512,500, general fund transfers to housing fund, $3 million, housing, $500,000, general fund transfers to centralized facilities fund, $2 million, sales use tax fund transfers to centralized facilities fund, $900,000, highways and streets, $1.25 million, entertainment venues, Washington Pavilion, $4.6 million, and $1.4 million, health, $100,000. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Sean.
Good evening. Sean Pritchard, Director of Finance. Items number 48, 49, and number 60 are all related here this evening. Last week, we walked through a pretty detailed plan about strategic investment of more than $50 million for the benefit of this community through the Sioux Falls For All Initiative. I'm not going to reiterate that again this evening, but under that plan, there is basically four core tenants in which all of the investments fall under. The first being supporting children, family, and neighborhoods; the second being investing in infrastructure and public space; the third being investing in jobs and economic opportunity in our community; and lastly, enhancing government response and resilience. The investments that are proposed in this plan would occur in multiple phases. A majority of them would occur as part of the actions tonight, as well as further actions on September 14. So the actions before you tonight would supplement the 2021 budget, as well as the current capital program for the city of Sioux Falls. Actions that would come on September 14 would be related to motioning to amend the 2022 budget when it is brought forward for consideration, along with the new five-year capital program that is brought forth with it. And then finally, a smaller portion would be budgeted in the remainder of 2023 and 2024. I am going to walk you through this appropriations ordinance. We did talk about this as well last week, but because this is the action before you here this evening, I want to walk through exactly what items are included in the package of supplemental proposals for this evening. So the first item that is on the supplemental is $800,000 for Parks and Recreation from the general fund, and that would be utilized to support the Dakota Aquarium and Butterfly House expansion. The second item is a duplication of the following two items in the supplemental. It's for a total of $3.125 million. It is a transfer from the general fund to the sales and use tax fund, and then following that is then an appropriation for the sales and use tax fund of $2.5 million. This would be for an investment in construction for the public safety training facility, $512,500 as the city's investment and contribution toward the expansion of tennis courts at Tomar Park. The next item is a $3 million transfer from the general fund to the housing fund. We had a great discussion today during the budget hearing about the housing fund, so this is part of the additional investment of funds to really realize the vision for the housing fund as it looks to address the issues of housing and accessibility to housing in our community. So that is a $3 million transfer, and then there is a second appropriation for a portion of that, that is $500,000, which is duplicated. That would expend funds for setting up a public safety homeownership down payment assistance program in core areas of Sioux Falls. The remaining $2.5 million to be appropriated at a later date, specific to other housing initiatives. The next item is a $2 million investment from the general fund to the centralized facilities internal service fund, which will be utilized to support investments and rehabilitation and reconstruction of our city-owned facilities. Next item, $900,000 for the law enforcement chiller replacement. There is a $1.25 million appropriation from the sales and use tax for highways and streets. This is specifically sourced from the American Recovery Act dollars and would be utilized for reconstruction of the Seventh Street cul-de-sac. There is a $6 million appropriation, $4.6 million of which in the entertainment tax is sourced from the American Rescue Act funds. $1.4 million is sourced from the available fund balance. This would be utilized for reconstruction of the cornice, as well as potentially the parapet at the Washington Pavilion. And lastly, there is a $100,000 general fund appropriation, which would be utilized for support of two community health workers to help navigate community health through our health department. Lastly, what I wanted to say was to be able to thank you for your input and collaboration through this process. I couldn't think of a better way of concluding this than to maybe paraphrase a comment in a recent article about the future of our community, and specifically calling out this initiative where the article said that this was a result of listening, collaboration, and cooperation. Our city's elected officials arrived at this plan through soliciting extensive input, deliberation, and compromise, and that is how our collective community must lead as we continue to grow and diversify. We appreciate your support throughout this process, and specifically for the items before you here this evening, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to stand by for those. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to item 48 here tonight? All right, council, you have any questions for Sean on the plan being presented to you here?
Move approval.
Second, Brecky.
All right. Motion by councillor Sale, seconded by Brecky to approve item 48. Any discussion on the motion to approve? Councillor Kylie?
Thank you. Director Pritchard is exactly right. There was a lot of listening, and the result is a lot of collaboration that's taking place in this effort. Last week, I did recognize Walter Ports and Sioux Falls Skate Park Association members for their efforts. If there's any of the members here, please raise your hand now. There they are in the back. There is, thank you very much. Also, but I did fail to mention Audrey Otto and her staff, and I do see Sean Irvin is here, and other board members over in the corner. I want to thank all of them, and here in the front, too. Thank you for your effort, as well as the Tennis Association members, if we have members of the Tennis Association here this evening, too. Again, we've listened, and I want to recognize the Association here this evening, too. Again, we've listened, and I want to recognize the individuals involved in these projects, because without them, these projects would not take place. The vast majority of the funding is coming privately. It's another example of public and private relationships that are going to benefit everybody within this community. So, thank you very much for your efforts. Thank you for your support here this evening as well, too.
Thank you, councilor. Counselor Brecky?
Last week, when we had first reading on this item, it was described by our finance director as a long-range strategic financial plan. And that, those words were music to my ears. That is something that I have been trying to put in the front of the council since I came on the council. That is something I think that the city council and the mayor collaboratively should be doing, not only in the financial arena, but in the citywide arena. And when we do it, and when we do it like we did it here, we can accomplish things that will have impact way into the future, decades into the future. And how you do it is how we did it. We held public hearings. People came to them. Then, when we siphoned it down to what we thought we were interested in, they had individual hearings, presentations at informational meetings. All of these meetings and hearings, people could come and offer additional testimony and support or negative support to the council, offer their opinions. And then, after we took all of those inputs, then we arrived at a place, a collaborative place. There was give and take, but Councilmember Erickson said it last week, every council member, the administration weighed in. Everybody around this podium has something in here that's really important to them. And that's how we best represent you when we act that way. Because I have, I'm a citywide councilor. There's district council members. We all have people coming at us with a garden hose that wants and needs an information. When we work together, in some form or other, they're all heard, because we're all hearing from different people, and that's when we work the best for you. So, I am extremely excited about this effort. I love the way it happened, and I love the final results. So, I'll be looking forward to approving it.
All right. Thank you, councilor. All right, any other discussion on the motion to approve item forty-eight here? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that item passes seven to zero. Move to item forty-nine.
Item forty-nine is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations for river greenway improvements, seven million. Sponsor is the mayor.
Sean Pritchett, Finance Director. This is part of the previous supplemental, but separated for the purposes of submitting it for a grant application to the EDA. So, this would provide seven million dollars for construction for the Phase Three of the River Greenway adjacent to the Sioux Steel District. We would also be looking to submit a grant application for two and a half million dollars in addition to this to support this project.
Thanks, Sean. Anyone from the public here to speak on item forty-nine? All right, councilor, you got any questions for Sean here?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Starr, go ahead.
Sorry, I almost let you off the hook. What happens if the EDA grant doesn't come through in the amount of time that we need? Will we come back for a supplement and continue forward with this, or would that stall this project?
It will. So, the timing of when they're accepting applications, it does coincide with our construction schedule for this. So, we look to probably bid this in the fall of 2022 timeframe. They're accepting applications on an ongoing basis, but the first set of reviews they expect to be in November, with solicitations made or awards made shortly thereafter. So, we're going to know by later this year. If it doesn't come to fruition, we'll have to look at other options, which might include repurposing some additional funds that we may not have allocated if circumstances change, or we expect there probably be surplus funds in the sales and use tax fund this year as well, due to some of the trending we're seeing with the sales taxes.
We're going to make it happen. That's the bottom line.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Look for a motion on this item.
Move approval. Jensen.
Second Kylie.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Counselor Kylie on this. Any discussion there, councilor? Hearing none. Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Move to item sixty, which was moved by amendment here.
Item sixty is a resolution amending the 2021-2025 capital program. Centralized facilities, two point nine million; entertainment venues, six million; fire rescue, two point five million; highways and streets, one point two five million; parks and recreation, five hundred and twelve thousand and seven million; water reclamation, six point eight million. Sponsor is the mayor.
Sean Pritchett, Director of Finance. So, this is the last of the three items. This amends the capital program for the items that were appropriated that have capital component to them. So, they're all listed in there. I'm happy to answer any questions you have on those. The one item I would specifically note is the six point eight million dollars. That's relative to the water reclamation, so that was part of our Sioux Falls For All Plan that we discussed last week, but it's not part of the appropriation, because it's a non-appropriated fund. So, the only piece here is an amendment to the capital program to add the six point eight million dollars. That also was sourced from the American Rescue Act plan.
Got it. Thank you, Sean. Anyone from the public here to speak to item sixty? Councilors, any questions on item sixty for Sean?
Move to approve.
Second Sale.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Sale to approve sixty. Any discussion on that motion? Counselor Sale, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the public's information, part of the funding you see here for fire rescue and for water rec has to do with the anticipated cost increase in building. That has happened in the economy recently. I will say the council is unanimous behind making sure that those facilities are done correctly, even if there is a cost increase, and the administration is with us on that. So, these are not additional projects. They're just to make sure that they can get it done the right way the first time.
Yep. Thank you, councilor. Any other discussion on this motion to approve here?
Move to approve. Brecky?
We have a motion and a second on this already, so we'll just take a vote then.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Item fifty, please.
Item fifty is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by revising Section 37.038. Lands included in rural service district, the rural service district shall include only those platted or unplatted lands, as in the judgment of the city council, are rural in character, are used or usable for agriculture, and are not developed for commercial, industrial, or urban residential purposes. The rural service district may include lands that are not contiguous to one another. Recommendation set a date a second reading for Tuesday, September seventh, 2021. Sponsor is the mayor.
Jason, good evening.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Jason Bieber with Planning and Development Services. This is a rural service district changes. As Tamara indicated, these are properties that are rural in nature and used for agricultural purposes. They have that reduced taxation levy, because they're used for ag and not commercial, industrial, or urban residential uses. Here's the current map of our properties that we currently have in the rural service district. This would be the map of the changes. The properties in yellow are just changing the legal description. They may have been platted or transferred. They're still within the rural service district, but we just have to change the legal description that's in the ordinance. And then, the items that are in orange are properties that are going to be removed from the rural service district. Those are properties that have been developed and are no longer used for agricultural purposes.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on item fifty tonight? Council, any questions on this item for Jason?
Set a second reading for Tuesday, September seventh.
Second.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Item fifty-one.
Item fifty-one is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located southeast of West Eighty-Fifth Street and South Pinewood Avenue, from the REC Recreation District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District, number 14729, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation set a date a second reading for Tuesday, September seventh, 2021. Private applicants, Eighty-Fifth Street Home LLC, Michael Bender.
The applicant here is Michael Bender. The owner is Wood Estates Development. This is located at the southeast corner of South Pinewood Avenue and West Eighty-Fifth Street. It's a small little point-three acre parcel. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at zoning it all single-family for future development.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item?
Move to approve Erickson.
Second Jensen.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen to set a date a second reading for Tuesday, September seventh. Any discussion there? Hearing none. Let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Item fifty-two.
Item fifty-two is an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located southeast of West Madison Street and North Ebenezer Avenue, from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the I-1 Light Industrial District, number 14734, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation set a date a second reading for Tuesday, September seventh, 2021. Private applicants, Willitsen Lund Engineering Corp., Eric Willitsen.
The applicant here is Eric Willitsen. The owner is Legacy LLP. It's located south of West Madison Street and east of North Ebenezer Avenue. It's about sixteen point seven acres in size, and the purpose is for future light industrial development on the properties.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to item fifty-two here? Any questions, council?
Move to approve Erickson.
Second Jensen.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen to set a date a second reading for Tuesday, September seventh. Discussion on that motion? All right, hearing none. Let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Item fifty-three.
Item fifty-three is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located south of West Maple Street and west of North Valleyview Road, from the AG Agricultural District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, RD2 Townhome Residential Suburban, and CN Conservation Districts, number 14746, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation is set a date a second reading for Tuesday, September seventh, 2021. Private applicants, Norman Engineering Incorporated, Aaron Norman.
The applicant here is Aaron Norman. The owner is Eric Christiansen. It's located just south of McGovern Middle School. It's about forty acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is to construct a future single-family, twin-home, and townhome development.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on item fifty-three?
Move to approve Erickson.
Second Jensen.
Motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen to approve, excuse me, to set a date a second reading for Tuesday, September seventh. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Item fifty-four.
Item fifty-four is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 2301 North Marion Road, from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD2 Townhome Residential Suburban, LW Live Work, C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar, RA3 Apartment Residential High Density, and CN Conservation Districts, to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar, LW Live Work, RA3 Apartment Residential High Density, RD2 Townhome Residential Suburban, and RS Single Family Residential Suburban Districts, number 14774, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation set a date a second reading for Tuesday, September seventh, 2021. Private applicants, Norman Engineering Incorporated, Aaron Norman.
The applicant is also Aaron Norman for this one, and the owner is also Eric Christiansen. This is located just northwest of Jefferson High School. It's about a hundred and fifty-two acres in size. The purpose of this is they're making some minor zoning boundary adjustments throughout their development.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on item fifty-four tonight? Council, any questions here? Counselor Erickson, go ahead.
No questions, just a statement that what an exciting time for the west side of Sioux Falls with the middle school and the high school and all the development that has opportunity to grow around there. You know, I know Jefferson's, I'm sorry, the middle school is set fairly empty around that area, and kind of the fire station's been out in no man's land, and to see some of these changes in single-family homes going around there is super exciting. So, we've had two back-to-back, and just wanted to draw attention to that as that part of town continues to really expand and grow with the new schools in place. The saying is, you know, build it and they'll come is really true. You put those schools in, and all of a sudden, houses are starting to fall and in place and other density. So, exciting time for the west side of Sioux Falls. I'll move to approve.
All right. Thank you, councilor.
Second Knightzert.
Motion by Erickson, seconded by Knightzert to set a date a second reading for Tuesday, September seventh. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Skip ahead then to item fifty-six.
Item fifty-six is a first reading, an ordinance amending the 2002 revised joint zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls by rezoning property at Lot A and the east two hundred feet of Lot B, tract one, Laurel Ridge Edition, southeast one-fourth, southeast one-fourth, Section twenty-three dash T102, north R49W, Mapleton Township, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, from the A1 Agricultural District to the Laurel Ridge Plan Development District. At the July twenty-six, 2021 Joint Planning Commission meeting, Minnehaha County voted unanimously for approval. The city voted two-three for approval. Motion failed. Recommendation set a date a second reading for the Joint Sioux Falls City Council-Minnehaha County Commission meeting of Tuesday, August twenty-fourth, 2021. Private applicant, Tyler Childress.
The applicant and owner here is Tyler Childress. That's located in our Joint Jurisdiction Area of Minnehaha County on Slip Up Creek Road, just south of the Veteran Cemetery. It's about three point six-two acres in size. The purpose of this is the applicant is looking to expand the existing Laurel Ridge Event Barn, as you can see, south of this property, and construct a pavilion on the property. Staff is not opposed to expanding the wedding venue and zoning this as part of the Laurel Ridge Plan Development District. However, we did wish that the applicant would plat off that east section. Currently, that lot will have this pavilion on the east side, and then on the west side of that property, there is an existing building eligibility where the applicant has indicated he wants to build his house. So, we feel that the applicant should plat that east side off and include it with the existing Laurel Ridge Event Barn before this property is rezoned.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item tonight? All right, councilors, you got any questions for Jason here?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Bieber, what would it cost the applicant to replat?
He would pay commercial plating fees to replat that lot into their ballpark, twenty thousand an acre, somewhere in there, for him to replat that.
And the four acres, so eighty thousand?
However big that parcel is, three point six-two, correct. Typically, within the city of Sioux Falls, we don't allow properties to have two zoning districts, especially when you're mixing residential with commercial. And so, that's really, from a planning perspective, that's really why we want him to plat that off and include that into that Laurel Ridge Event Barn property. They're all kind of the same use, and then leave that residential property for the future construction of his house.
It just seems cost prohibitive to add to his business and that part of it. So, that's my concern. So, thank you.
Counselor Erickson.
Jason, can you tell me, I can't remember the name of the barn on the west side of Sioux Falls that went in off of Twelfth Street, and I know the family that owns it.
I forgot the name of it, too.
Maybe Hidden something, or Emerald Pine, maybe? Emerald Pine? I think that's what it is. Anyways, did they have to play, pay, excuse me, pay plating fees for that?
Yep. They kind of brought, so we worked with them a little bit. They brought that flag lot from Maple Street off of Maple South, so they didn't have to pay the whole quarter section they were doing, and then to the area that was, the event barn was placed on it. But yes, they did plat, and they did pay city plating fees.
So, why did he not have to pay him the first go around? So why did he not have to pay him the first go-around?
That is a good question. I believe Minnehaha County issued him a building permit because they already said that it was a lot.
So kind of circum, I mean, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but it kind of circumvented the system maybe a little bit, and...
Yeah, we would have preferred them to not issue a building permit until he platted, and that was always the discussion with Mr. Childress when we rezoned that original event barn up there.
So will you go back and ask for the plating fees of the entire place, or just the new?
I believe, and I don't want to speak for engineering, but I believe the large area that's already been built on is long gone. It would just be for that piece that he would be expanding.
So he kind of got a, maybe a free pass on that by, I mean, I'm just hypothetically saying. I'm just comparing apples to apples, because I'm sure the other barn would love to come back and say, well, I don't want to pay plating fees either. So I mean, I get it, I don't know where I'm at on this one yet, but I'm just trying to compare a like project in a joint jurisdiction. And Emerald Pines did not pass without some controversy. I mean, we delayed it, we brought it back, they had attorneys, and then finally it did pass. But they did pay their plating fees with that. So I would definitely have a problem if you were going to make it go retroactive and make them pay for all the other plating fees that maybe they got a free deal on. But what's fair is fair, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, we try and be consistent with those barns. We did have the one on the east side, too, that just opened, the River View, that's out by the Big Sioux River. They actually annexed into the city, but they paid all their plating fees and actually constructed a street as part of their project. So we've tried to be a little bit consistent with all those event barns, and that's where we're trying to get this lot to be platted off prior to being zoned, so that's where we're coming from.
Thank you, appreciate the answers and your knowledge on this.
Other questions for Jason on this item?
I'll move to set the Joint City Council-Minnehaha County Commission meeting of Tuesday, August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, seconded by Sale on that. Any discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Item fifty-eight.
Item is, item fifty-eight, move by amendment, first reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter one-twenty-one by adding medical cannabis regulations. Recommendation, set a date a second reading for Tuesday, September seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Erica.
Good evening, council, Erica Beck, Chief of Staff. Tonight, I am going to introduce to you a package of ordinances that outline our proposal for how we will allow or provide for access to medical cannabis in Sioux Falls. Excuse me, I'm going to begin with just high-level comments regarding how we got to this point, as well as highlighting a few policy-related items that I would ask each of you to pay close attention to this evening. Following this, I'm going to turn over the presentation to Counselor Knightzert, who, as all of you know, has become an incredible resource in this process and is quite often referenced, at least in our office, as the local expert on medical cannabis. Once Counselor Knightzert has finished, he's going to turn over the presentation to City Attorney Coystra, who's going to walk through the framework of the proposed licensing ordinance for you. Okay, in two thousand and twenty, the voters of South Dakota passed Initiative Measure twenty-six, and approved medical cannabis. The South Dakota Departments of Health and Education are now establishing and will run a new regulatory program to ensure the safety of patients, students, and the public in this new industry. Medical cannabis became legal in our state on July one, but the South Dakota Department of Health has until October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one to enact final administrative rules. Cities and counties in South Dakota have the authority through this legislation to develop regulations to exercise local control of medical cannabis in the following areas. The first being zoning, of which you will learn more about tonight, following the licensing ordinance. And this is essentially where businesses can be located and which uses are allowed. Licensing, number two, which are the rules for businesses, including the establishment of licensing fees. And then number three, which involves nuisance and health, for example, smoking, consumption, odor, et cetera. On May twenty-fifth, as you most all remember, the city council held a working session on this topic where you heard an overview of medical cannabis framework, regulations, zoning ordinance considerations for medical cannabis. You held a question-and-answer session, and you heard from proponents of the medical cannabis industry. On June first, at the city council meeting, a motion was made to appoint both Counselor Knightzert and myself to the I-M twenty-six task force. We then held four specific meetings of the I-M twenty-six task force, June twenty-third, July seventh, July fourteenth, and July twenty-first. Those meetings included task force members, representatives from Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties, and of course, Counselor Knightzert and myself, along with staff members from each of those bodies as well. On several occasions in these meetings, both Counselor Knightzert and I offered that we were contemplating a very prudent and practical approach to drafting the proposed ordinances that are before you this evening. Industry representatives were in attendance during those meetings, as were leaders of our local communities and other interested members of the public. Discussion among the task force, including zoning and licensing topics and ordinances that were being considered by both the counties, the city, and the joint areas of both bodies. Public input was provided for during each meeting, and the industry spoke and answered questions from the task force. We've had a team of people since then, working collaboratively, to draft ordinance framework for the licensing and zoning ordinances before you this evening. This has included our planning staff, our city attorney's office, the mayor's office, and many of you, city councilors, who have reached out to us, providing input, specifically Counselor Knightzert, who has quickly, again, established himself as a local expert on this topic. Tonight before you are the licensing ordinance and zoning ordinance for the city of Sioux Falls, as well as the city and Lincoln County zoning ordinance. While all these ordinances work very symbiotically together, they're being heard separately tonight. Our guiding direction for developing this ordinance has been to uphold the will of the voters in I-M twenty-six by using the local control provided to us to allow for the safe dispensing of medical cannabis in Sioux Falls. Okay, so to those policy points that I referenced, three specific policy points that I want to comment on, and then Counselor Knightzert's going to go into greater detail with. And this is just with reference to the licensing ordinance. Number one, proposing to allow for dispensaries and testing facilities, not cultivation and manufacturing. Two, proposing a cap for dispensaries at a total of five in the city of Sioux Falls. And three, a proposal for a license fee of a hundred thousand dollars every two years for those five dispensaries. And I just want to briefly comment on that licensing fee, because I do feel like this is worthy of you knowing a little bit more about, given that this isn't actually written into the ordinance. The thought process behind the fee, to some degree, is that we have to engage in a public health campaign. Very similar, Counselor Recky, to what you were mentioning this afternoon with respect to our vaccination campaign and COVID. We have an obligation and a responsibility, now that medical cannabis is legal within our city, to educate our community on how to safely utilize this substance. And ultimately, a portion of that fee that we're proposing tonight would be utilized for just that, a public health campaign. So that is, in essence, one reason why we're bringing that licensing fee forward. So those are the three very specific licensing policy points that I want to mention for you to give special consideration to during first reading. And now I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Knightzert, who's going to go through the ordinance and those policy points and provide a bit more context before City Attorney Coystra goes through the framework for the licensing ordinance. Counselor?
Thank you, Erica. I'm just going to cover some of the policy discussion we had and how we got to where we got in general, and then in the specific, and I'm going to leave some of those facts and what actually the law says to our city attorney, and I'll try not to be redundant. Just as a, I'm not going to go through all of this, obviously, but there's been a lot of time spent. It's been a collaborative effort over many months with a number of people, the city attorney's office, the mayor's office, city staff, the South Dakota Municipal League, other jurisdictions. We've been in countless meetings, conference calls. Every local government is struggling with this. This is something new, and it's been a very steep learning curve. And so we're all looking to what to do. And frankly, many cities and smaller towns are looking to us for leadership. You know, this really began back in November with the passage of I-M twenty-six and Amendment A. And in late November, that's when things really got started. We spent the first few months, until Amendment A was ruled unconstitutional, trying to harmonize I-M twenty-six and Amendment A and figure out how they work together. And then as things went along, we had, of course, Amendment A found unconstitutional. So that was taken off the table, but of course, that's been appealed, and we're waiting to find out the fate of Amendment A. So that lingers over us, and that could change the landscape dramatically. And then for all local governments, I will tell you, as we sat through all of these meetings, a lot of people would ask, why, you know, why has it come to this point when we're working on bringing something forward? Well, frankly, it's been just one measure of uncertainty after another. We had the state legislative session, which potentially could have turned the entire thing upside down, rewritten it entirely. It was, there was a lot to learn. We were waiting for state rules to be promulgated. You had your summer studies. We had just, it was just a moving target. It's very difficult to write an ordinance when you don't even know what the state law framework is. And so it just went through, and we've gone on throughout the summer. And Jim, you can go to the next slide. And I just want to repeat, the one constant through this has been uncertainty. We've had Amendment A on and off. We've been wondering what the Supreme Court will do. The potential legislative session-changing things, special sessions potentially. We didn't get draft rules until June here, and that's just going through the process. In fact, tomorrow, they're going to have the public hearing on those rules, and then they'll go to the interim rules committee in September. So we're not even sure what the final rules are going to be yet. This is a new industry to our state. None of us know exactly what the businesses are going to look like, and we're trying to create regulations for a business that really doesn't even exist yet. We don't know what the community standard is. That's been the real struggle. What do people expect? What do they want to see? Where do they want to see these businesses? How ubiquitous do they want them to be? What rules do they want them to follow? Another major unknown is how many cardholders are there going to be? Are there going to be five thousand, fifty thousand, one thousand? We really don't know. We do know the state is having summer studies. They are going to be changing the law. There's going to be some clarification, there may be some substantive changes. The promulgated rules are coming forward. We don't know what the side effects are going to be. As I've told people, my concern has never been somebody who has a legitimate medical need using medical cannabis. My concern is the things that do go with any controlled substance out in the population, diversion to minors, increased usage by minors because it might be perceived as safer, kids in the emergency room who might accidentally ingest it, DUI. Just some of the things that go with just any controlled substance. Next slide, Jim. So really, the principles I think we came to is, of course, honoring the will of the voters. And I want to make it clear that that's based on all of I-M twenty-six provisions, all thirty pages and ninety-five sections. And that's important, because what the author wrote and what the voters voted for was to also give us local control. And sometimes people focus on one section, but not the entire thing. And as I'll get to, everything we're proposing is in harmony with what the law says. A general guiding principle, I think, is very prudent, is this is very much new to us, and there's a lot of unknowns and a lot of things that are out of our control and may change. And so if you're going to err on one side, you should err in the side of caution. That would be my position. Adult use recreational or recreational, it's a very real possibility. It passed once. It may be Amendment A, it may be something else. It's really the same product with the same concerns, as far as policymakers go. People buying it for different reasons, but it really has to do with the diversion and those sorts of issues. We have a duty to protect youth and to minimize the negative consequences. Alcohol is legal, painkillers are legal, cigarettes are legal, video lottery is legal. But they all have negative effects. We know that, and we try to minimize it. And it costs us an enormous amount of money to deal with those social and economic costs. We need to protect the integrity of our established neighborhoods, and frankly, we have a lot to learn. Let's not go too fast and make mistakes. Let's look for a balanced, common-sense approach that works for Sioux Falls, not necessarily what works in San Francisco or Colorado. But on the same token, let's learn from what they've done and what works, and use their models. Let's live it and learn it, and then let's just watch it for a year or two. Let's see how it develops, let's see what these look like, and let's get feedback. I think people are really going to have some good feedback once they see these on the ground, and I think that's really going to be, give us some good guidance. So I-M twenty-six and the will of voters, they've talked about will of the voters a lot. Of course, I care about that, and that's important. Everything that's proposed in our ordinance is in harmony with that I-M twenty-six. It gave local control, it gave us a control over zoning and licensing. It gave us the ability to potentially ban three of the four establishment types. It says that we can have a numerical limit on the establishment types, we can have as little as one dispensary. We can enact zoning restrictions. We're not being as restrictive as we could, but we're not having a free-for-all either. We're taking a cautious approach to start. So really, why five? Well, that was really kind of a, essentially a collaborative discussion of trying to figure out, where do you start? We have no idea what the demand is going to be when this gets started. We need to provide access. What could we do to provide reasonable access? And we decided that five is probably that number to start with. With all of this, with the caveat that this can obviously be changed. It probably should be noted, and the Health Secretary has mentioned this multiple times, you're not going to see any actual storefronts in the state, probably until fall of next year, between the time it takes for them to issue licenses and then people to start cultivating and go through everything. So no matter what we do, it's going to be a while. As far as access goes, it should also be noted, and this is really important for people that maybe not be ambulatory or that they may have transportation issues, the author contemplated that. That's why you can designate a caregiver, can be almost anybody that doesn't have a felony, who's empowered to purchase, transport, deliver, and administer on behalf of a patient. That caregiver can take their card and go make a purchase and bring it to that person. They can help them administer it. So they will have that potential. Cardholders' access, frankly, if you talk to many others, it's not going to be the number of dispensaries that we allow. It's really going to come down to whether or not doctors are willing to write the certification. And frankly, they're going to likely be initially, for a whole host of reasons. And that's something I'll leave to the medical community. The license fee, that's another one where, you know, it really comes down to what is quote-unquote "the right number." We looked at North Dakota, they do ninety thousand every two years for medical dispensaries. Granted, that's the state fee, but North Dakota is pretty comparable in terms of population. We want it to be enough that it ensures that there's serious and professional license holders, not somebody that's just trying to, you know, we don't want to have people that aren't going to follow the rules, but not be so onerous as to be limiting. No matter what our fee is going to be, if you look at the state rules, it's not going to be cheap to get in this business. It's highly regulated in every state, and that's probably worth mentioning. These sorts of restrictions that we see are not uncommon. In fact, most cities in Colorado ban marijuana entirely. This is another thing where there's a lot of unknowns, and it's hard to determine what the right fee should be, because frankly, we haven't done this before. We don't know what the administrative costs are going to be, we don't know what the enforcement costs are going to be. Are we going to be doing random stings? Is the state going to do it? Are we going to have to deal with other, you know, other costs? We just don't know. This is another thing where I think we're just going to have to live it, and we can always reevaluate it. So as far as the number of dispensaries and the uses, I've talked about the dispensaries. As far as the testing, really what it came down to is testing is the item that ensures the product's safety. So it's going to be here. It's good public policy to encourage that, to make sure it's safe. And then there was discussion about cultivation and manufacturing. The law says that we don't have to allow it, and it really comes down to, let's take a cautious approach. We can always circle back. You're probably going to see that in the counties. In fact, Lincoln County has already passed it. And really, it's the dispensaries, the storefronts that really matter in terms of access when it comes to a patient, because that's where they go and purchase a product. And again, we can reevaluate. So in summary, this is really based on months of due diligence, and it recognizes that there's a lot of uncertainty, unanswered questions, and things that are out of our control. unanswered questions, and things that are out of our control. And we're just really not going to know a lot of things for the next year or two. This can be very fluid. It honors the will of the voters in a common sense, balanced approach that will help to minimize any negative consequences, and it provides access. And it allows time for the state program to mature and for us to see it and live it, and let our citizens develop informed opinions so that we can make tweaks based on what's really happening on the ground here in this state. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to our city attorney, Stacy Coestra.
Thank you, Counselor. My slides put up here. Thank you, Jim. Okay, so to build on the prior two comments regarding the ordinances, what I'd like to do is just kind of give everyone an overview of the structure of the proposed ordinance. And I want to start with the, the authorities, some of which has been touched on and some of which has not. Really, when you look at the supremacy clause within the United States, it's federal law that controls. And as everyone likely understands, as a matter of law federally, marijuana is still considered a controlled substance. And so that, that's sort of an overarching theme that every state and every community has had to deal with. Here in South Dakota, I am twenty-six was the initiated measure passed by the voters and ultimately was codified into SDCL thirty-four dash twenty G. So you're going to see, or hear, a number of references to that statutory structure at the, at the state level. Now, also at the state level are the, the state's administrative rules. And so Article forty-four ninety are the rules and the regulations that have been promulgated by the Department of Health, and are the, the rules that, as I'll touch on a little bit in the, in, in the timeline, are, have to be in effect by October twenty-ninth, and may in fact be in place and effective earlier than that. And now we have the, the ordinances that we're talking about tonight. This agenda item is City Ordinance one twenty-one, which deals with the licensing. And then there will be a discussion regarding City Ordinance one sixty, which is the zoning component. So in front of the council, as we sit here right now, is one twenty-one on the licensing side. So timing, and there are hosted dates here. I will run through these relatively quickly because they've already been discussed, both by Chief of Staff Beck and Counselor Nitzer. So as we're all familiar, November three, twenty twenty was when I am twenty-six was adopted by the voters. The working session that was referenced before was, occurred on May twenty-fifth of this year. June twenty-third was the first draft regulations promulgated by the state. As Counselor Nitzer alluded to, those are, there'll be a hearing on those tomorrow. That was the first draft that local governments could start to, to review and start to make some decisions, based on where the state appeared to be heading. July first of this year was when I am twenty-six transitioned into, into statute as thirty-four dash twenty G. These are three dates that the, the task force meetings that included many of Lincoln Counties and other communities at time. And again, public input and the discussions related to this whole body of law. July twenty-seventh was when the state released their second draft of, of regulations, which helped refine things and, and just assisted local governments in, in understanding where the state intended to go. August seventeenth, tonight, is first reading at the, at the city level. September seventh, three weeks from now, is the anticipated second reading. That's currently what's in front of the council tonight. So just so everyone is aware, how, how first and second reading work pursuant to state law is the merits of the ordinances itself are not in front of the council for an up or down vote. All that's being decided tonight is when to set that second date of reading, the proposal of which is, is September seventh. September eleven of this year will be the publication date. Again, these asterisks indicate that these are pending. So what that means under state law is that in order for a city ordinance to become effective as law, is it has to have a first and second reading, and then it has to be published, published in the legal newspaper of the community. And then it's twenty days thereafter when the ordinance actually becomes effective. So in the event that this proposed process goes through, these ordinances would not be effective until October one of twenty twenty-one. And there is a potential, as I alluded to earlier, that October twenty-ninth is the date by which the state's regulations have to be in effect. There is a possibility that those would in fact be in effect on Okay, so here's an overview of the body of ordinances that's being proposed tonight. One of the things I would make note of is that it's unusual, and by some counts, it may be nearly ten years since the city of Sioux Falls last adopted an entire chapter of ordinances at one time. What you'll see in front of the, the council many, many times is that proposed ordinances are considered, but rarely do you see this many ordinances adopted writ large. There is a bit of an analogy to that in the sense that I am twenty-six and the ninety-five statutes that are now state law were also adopted writ large. So this is not a garden variety process, as you, as you see state law and city ordinance come together. Okay, so now if you look at the top, Chapter one twenty-one point zero zero one, this is the first section. Again, I'll go back here. You see that there are six, six sections, in effect, six sub-chapters to one twenty-one. This is the first one. There are numerous definitions within this subchapter. These are some of them that are frankly significant when it comes to understanding and considering what this body of ordinances mean and what the impact is. And what you will find, if you compare these draft city ordinances to those of the state statutes, they are essentially identical. One of the primary differences, and I'll use allowable amount of cannabis as an example, is that's specified at three ounces or less, okay, of medical cannabis that you are allowed to possess. There are other sections of that that relate to home, home growth, for example, other amounts. What this ordinance does, it does, is rather than restating what state law says, is it references state law. And there are various number of those within these definitions. And that way, and it was mentioned earlier about all of these statutes and ordinances working together, which by the way is part of the complexity of it, is that in the event that state law would change, that way our ordinances are just adapted automatically as a matter of law, as opposed to it needing to come back to the city. Another example would be the second definition there for debilitating medical condition. Now, there's a specified number of debilitating conditions that are eligible for medical cannabis. And as, as may or may not be broadly understood, that, this is not a process of a doctor prescribing medical cannabis. It's a, it's a process of a physician certifying that an individual has a debilitating, debilitating condition for which medical cannabis can assist or support or, or treat them. And so there is a list in city ordinance that mirrors the list in state law, but we also have a provision in ours that in the event that the state adds additional conditions, then those are automatically added to city ordinance as well, so that we're not trailing the state in the event that it's determined that there are other conditions for which people could benefit by medical cannabis. As touched on earlier by Counselor, Counselor Nitzer, designated caregiver is a, is an important definition in that it doesn't require that somebody who suffers from a debilitating condition needs to go to a dispensary to purchase marijuana. A designated caregiver can do that on behalf of someone, as long as it's not more than five individuals that they're providing that care for. They also have other certain requirements, like they're not allowed to have a disqualifying felony conviction and those types of things. Medical cannabis establishment, state law provides for four potential establishments. Dispensary, which is of course a primary topic for tonight, but it also is cultivating facilities, manufacturing facilities, and testing facilities. This body of ordinances proposed is allowing both testing facilities and dispensaries and not cultivating and manufacturing facilities. Cultivating facilities are those where it would actually grow the marijuana in a manufacturing facility, be one that would transition that marijuana into an actual product. Non-resident cardholder is a definition that basically recognizes that people from outside the state can possess or obtain medical cannabis in the state of South Dakota, but there is a process that they're required to go through with the state to ensure that they have the appropriate credential in the form of a registration card here in South Dakota. Practitioner basically relates to physicians. A qualifying patient is somebody who has those debilitating conditions, and the registry identification card is what the state would issue so that the person can have access. Paragraph two, the operation of cannabis establishments. What our city ordinances provide are a number of common requirements by which this business, as many others, all others would have to comply, from zoning, land use, building, and fire codes, all of those, as a matter of law, would be required to be complied with. Again, dispensaries and testing facilities are what would be authorized. And as alluded to earlier, no more than five dispensaries. There are some restrictions on those, which include that the, the dispensaries, unlike the testing facilities, dispensaries would be allowed to be open from eight AM to ten PM. They're required to have certain plans to ensure the safety and health of the community, whether that be ensuring that there's not unauthorized access to cannabis, that there's the appropriate security in place for that and to control odor. And again, those who are employed are officers of the, of the companies, the dispensaries, and testing facilities would need to have successful background checks. Section three relates to the licensing. It affect the application process and how that works. Paragraph A one identifies basically the, the process. And I think it's important for the public to understand that, that how this works, from a ten thousand foot view, is that a proposed dispensary first needs to come to the city to pursue a license, okay? And then upon receipt of that license, then they go to the state, because the state has to certify and provide them a registration certificate in order to be able to conduct business. And then they can take that certificate back to the city, and they can receive a certificate, certificate of occupancy upon just confirmation that they have the appropriate safety and health measures in place. Paragraph two provides the application procedures. So in the event someone is interested in opening a dispensary, they can review those to ensure that they check all the blocks required for, for successfully completing an application. And then paragraph three provides for a procedure for ensuring that applicants on those initial licenses, everybody has a fair shake and, and an equal opportunity to provide a license. The reason for that, those provisions, in effect a lottery, not unlike the state's random selection of those appropriate for receipt of a license, is to ensure that there isn't any special treatment, and that it's, it's neutral, and everybody receives the same due process. And as alluded to by Counselor Nitzer, at this point, there's really no way of knowing if the city is going to get three applications for a dispensary, or five, or ten, or fifteen, or twenty, or more. That remains to be seen. Paragraph B relates to the fees, already addressed, but one that, there are two types of initial fees. There's the application fee, which is one that has not yet been sent, been set, but that will be set per state law by resolution, as it's allowed. And, and so that would be coming up at second reading, because resolutions do not require two readings. They only require one. The initial license fee is already discussed twice. I won't belabor that. But the one hundred thousand dollars would be for the initial year and a second year on a calendar year basis. And a renewal fee would be a two-year calendar year period of also one hundred thousand dollars. So paragraphs C and D provide for suspension and revocation in the event that a, a testing facility or a dispensary failed to follow the law. And paragraph D provides the procedures, so that again, every dispensary and testing facility has notice as to how that process would work. Paragraph four are restrictions. And so this is the, the category where the provides, provides some parameters. The first sections there relate to things the city does not permit. And basically what these state, these do, these are not mandatory in the sense that the city is overtly or explicitly requiring something. But what the city ordinances not permit are undertaking tasks while under the influence. That includes negligence or professional malpractice, possession or use in correctional facilities. Again, the city is not allowing that, but it would be up to the correctional facility to take their own action as to how they, they handle that. And the same with smoking on public transportation. An additional restriction would be a prohibition on public consumption, smoking of, of medical cannabis, odor control, as I alluded to earlier, and, and then signage regarding no display of marijuana leaf, the term marijuana, or depictions of holding or smoking cannabis. Lastly, paragraph five relates to additional provisions. The state allows for cities to have input, as long as they have ordinances in place prior to the promulgation of their regulations and those becoming effective, that the state, that local governments are allowed to give the state their preference as to, as who the, the state should issue registration certificates to. And, and then also, as provided by state law, local governments are allowed to impose civil penalties for violations of city ordinance. One thing that that does is it does allow local governments to not go immediately to suspension or revocation, but allows to put them on notice and, and impose civil penalties on a regular basis. So with that, I will give it back to the chair.
All right. Thank you, Erica, Counselor. Stacy, fourth presentation. We'll, we'll move on to public input. How public input will work is you have three minutes to speak on the item. When three minutes are up, I will let you know, and we'll move on to the next person until everyone's had a chance to speak. So come on up.
Greetings. I'm David Sokitis, and I'm here to talk about medical cannabis. Anytime you, you deal with something new, it's good to have, you know, more regulations if it's dangerous and less if it's beneficial. So with that perspective, I want to look at medical cannabis as it relates to a few other things. Now, now cannabis is a drug, and we're all worried about drugs. But if you go down to the bottom of my chart over there, it looks like there are zero cannabis overdoses. Zero. It's a very small number. There's my source. And if you look at legal drugs, regularly forty-seven thousand people die every year from legal drugs. So, you know, since we're looking at how dangerous things are, it kind of looks like cannabis is safer than legal drugs. I mean, there's the data. Alcohol kills more people than legal drugs, so maybe we want to keep alcohol down to a minimum. And heart disease is a real killer, so it'd be nice if we could take care of the causes of that. Bad diet, for example, maybe we could do something about all the sugar in the grocery store. So with that for background, let's look at these license requirements. I had some help reviewing this, but you know, it's sometimes mistakes still keep through, but I made a correction there. So if we're looking at liquor stores, I guess taking liquor home isn't that much of a big deal, because it's not very expensive to get a license for a liquor store. But we're, as a culture, really worried about liquor consumed on the site. So the license fee for liquor at a restaurant or a bar is darn near two hundred thousand dollars. Well, that's going to keep bars and restaurants down to a small number if you need a full license. And pharmacies, you know, even though they prescribe chemicals that kill people now and again, there's no limit, and there's no license fees. And if you look at medical cannabis, we're going for fifty thousand dollars every year for a license. And, and that seems rather high compared to pharmacies who don't have any license fees at all, especially remembering that we're talking about medical cannabis and not recreational cannabis. Big difference there. So I've looked at the draft cannabis ordinances, and, and there's some problems with them. We have got a high cost of entry, and anytime you have a high cost of entry, what you're doing is you're encouraging big business and discouraging small businesses. You're also increasing the cost of medical cannabis and reducing access to it just because it's so hard to get these businesses going. And when you reduce competition to pharmaceuticals, well then, you know, you're protecting that industry.
Thanks, David.
Oh, a lot of time.
Yes, sir. All right, come on up, sir.
Good evening.
Evening, Mayor and Council members. Matthew Mosher, resident of Sioux Falls here. First question for the city attorney is, does the city have any intention to work with the DEA's Division the DEA's division control division, diversion control division? They allow licensing to import, manufacture, distribute, which is an exception to the federal law, which should theoretically also allow to allow electronic funds transfer and access to the banking system, reducing one of the major externalities of large amounts of cash on hand. And then the second major issue is for the prescriptions, is there any intent in the regulation to monitor the metadata of different providers and see if there's any statistical significance in different providers? Like the sign that is over, I think it's on 26th and Sycamore, is a sign that says, "Get evaluated for medical marijuana right now," and there's a phone number. They're probably not providing any other prescriptions for any other ailments, and they're probably not a PCM or somebody that's, you know, acquainted with that person. To alleviate some of the issues with the business newness, the newness of this business in the industry, I might recommend a source that I recently came across. It's ThisViewOfLife.com. It's an evolutionary perspective of pro-social, and it's not socialism, but pro-social, pro-group, and how humans grow groups and get together, cooperate, coordinate, and compete to navigate through competition, as well as then combat and further on. And then that same group also, those principles are based on Nobel Prize-winning Eleanor, I'm going to murder the name, sorry, Ostromick. She won the Nobel Prize in Economics for her publication on generalizing the core development principles of efficiency of groups. So she looked at how groups succeed, how groups fail, and then found out what the commonalities were so that we could learn the best interests of how to implement those universal principles of success. That is all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Matthew.
Good evening.
Mayor, Council, Emmett Reisstrafer, 915 South Fort Avenue. I first just really want to ask that you consider extending the time period for input. The last speaker had absolutely zero comments about this ordinance specifically. I know there's at least three or four other people that want to talk.
There'll be five minutes at second reading, so there'll be two more minutes at the second reading.
Sure. All right, well, thank you. First, this is a historic and monumental time for Sioux Falls. I've been fighting for this for 12 years. I applaud all of you for taking the time to look at this issue and work on it. That's not without saying I have serious concerns about both the policy and the process. I spoke about that at length at the informational meeting on my Facebook today. Why the process is intertwined, I know the task force was asked tonight, in three minutes, I can't cover everything, but just as an example, the first meeting on July 7th, I had found out on July 6th from Lincoln County Commissioner Landine, who had spoke about it at their meeting, not because the city of Sioux Falls invited me or any stakeholders, and not because it was posted online. I had to call Denise, who had to put me on hold and dig around and find out when and where this meeting was going to occur. So I would say this task force was hardly collaborative at all. There is zero reflection in this ordinance of the feedback we've provided. We've been refused meetings. We have talked about the effects of what happens with licensing caps and high fees, and in every single jurisdiction where you have this approach, there is corruption, litigation, and delays. I mean, there are some serious concerns that are not being addressed. When you restrict access, what's going to happen, Mayor, is there's going to be people growing at home all over Sioux Falls, and I know you care about that, and you want to get this right, so we're just asking for that opportunity to be collaborative, and I haven't felt that's been the case. Caps, high fees lead to those problems. I have no doubt that there's going to be legal questions around the fee. This looks like revenue, not like a fee. If you do a Google search on, in the SDCL for actual cost or fee, you can see hundreds of examples throughout state law where fees cover the actual cost of administering a process or procedure. Nowhere is a fee directly creating revenue to do special spending projects. I'm all for the education, let's do it, but I think we need to be reasonable with these fees and follow the law. And I'm out of time, so that, let me just add this. With the municipal league, you have them recommending a $5,000 fee. That is the fee amount in several cities across South Dakota. When you consult their city attorneys and their city officials, they don't feel comfortable going beyond the state fee. It has to be reasonable. That's what the municipal league's recommending. Also caution you to consider what the second page, this is in your packet, has highlighted about not having a policy in effect. I know you understand how initiatives and referendums work and how that matches up with the timeline, so I'm pleading with you to work with us to address all these concerns you're going to hear. Otherwise, you're probably not going to get your ordinance passed anyways.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak on this tonight? Come on up.
Hi, quick question before my time starts. Are we, do we have three minutes per ordinance? There are multiple marijuana licenses.
Correct.
Thank you.
State your name, sir.
Ned Horstedt. I'm the Executive Director of the Cannabis Industry Association of South Dakota. I want to speak to Agenda Item 55 with the zoning regulations. The Cannabis Industry Association is a group of business owners, entrepreneurs, and advocates who are working together to build a responsible and successful cannabis industry that serves the needs of patients, strengthens the economy, creates jobs, and provides new opportunities for South Dakota businesses. I appreciate the time and effort by city staff and elected officials to put this ordinance together. I attended all of the IM26 task force meetings. The vast majority of public comment was to keep Sioux Falls open for business, though not a lot of the public showed up, and that might just be because it was trained normal morning business hours for folks that work. Three primary, three primary issues with the zoning ordinance that we ask you to reconsider. Number one, allow zoning for product manufacturing businesses, at least in industrial areas. There are two types of businesses that fit this license type. There are extraction labs and product development companies. Extraction labs sound scary, but they need not be. You can think about it this way. If you want juice out of an orange, you can extract that two ways. You can press it, squeeze it, or you can drop it in a chemical compound that would separate the juice from the organic matter. Same thing for cannabis. If you want to ban extraction facilities that use hazardous chemicals, you certainly can. Solventless extraction poses no credible risk to public safety. Now on to product development companies, which would also need to be licensed by the state in the same way. Been in touch with several entrepreneurs who want to set up kitchens. In fact, they would take the oil that you get from an extraction company and use it to make products for patients, edibles, tinctures, et cetera. Under state law and Department of Health rules, they would need the same license product manufacturing as extraction labs. The cannabis would be tested before and after each step in the supply chain. In fact, our association helped the Department of Health put strong testing regulations in place, because we're interested in the health and safety of patients and consumers in this new industry. Number two, allow zoning for cultivation facilities within industrial areas. Under the current map, cultivation facilities would fit well into some of the industrial areas and would create dozens, if not hundreds, of good-paying jobs for the people of Sioux Falls. Sioux Falls has probably the best infrastructure to handle this type of business. Point three, reduce setbacks for dispensaries and testing labs. Testing labs are a private regulatory body that ensure cannabis products are safe. Dispensaries are, of course, where patients are able to get their medicine. Many cities, including TM Brookings, are considering setbacks of 300 feet from sensitive use, and Rapid Cities considering allowed use at 500 feet with conditional use for anything less than 500 feet, assuming the applicant has proper zoning. What you're proposing is twice as restrictive as bars in Sioux Falls, and state law and Department of Health rules already prohibit cannabis consumption on-site, so it should be regulated closer to a pharmacy, or if you prefer, off-sale liquor. Finally, if you make it impossible for these businesses to exist within our city, you're effectively banning half of the industry. We're three in four voters.
Thank you, Ned. Appreciate it, man.
Thanks.
Come on up, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilors. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jason Tarasek. I'm a cannabis attorney with Minnesota Cannabis Law. I'm also a board member of the Cannabis Industry Association of South Dakota. Ned is our Executive Director. I launched my cannabis law practice in 2018, and as I started that law practice, I myself was dubious of the medical benefit of marijuana. I thought it was just an excuse, maybe, for people to get high. I no longer think that way. I have been enmeshed in this area now for the better part of three years, and I have seen that medical marijuana has real benefit for people. It changes lives. It's real medicine. In Minnesota, the medical marijuana program launched in 2015, and we made a big mistake there. We did not allow patients to receive flower, that's the raw plant. Rather, we only allowed the processed version of that flower to be made available to patients, which dramatically increased the price of the medicine, and it forced a lot of those patients who need this medicine to turn to the black market. So it effectively tried to help patients, but didn't help everyone. And significantly, this medicine is not covered by insurance. It's still illegal at the federal level, and most, in fact, all insurance that I'm aware of does not cover medical marijuana. So most of these patients are paying hundreds of dollars out of pocket for this medicine. Medical marijuana has been proven to wean people off dangerous addictive drugs, like opiates, for example, which, you know, we're not alone. In Minnesota, South Dakota, there's an opiate epidemic. Medical marijuana can help people get off of those addictive drugs that can kill them. As the earlier speaker mentioned, and I applaud him for raising this, marijuana has never killed anyone, ever. In that way, it is safer than alcohol. I urge you to regulate it like alcohol. Rather than perpetuate the stigma associated with marijuana, please embrace medical marijuana for the benefit of this community. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks, Jason. I'll go to this guy coming up right here in the hat, and then you can be next, young man. Come on up, sir. Good evening.
Thank you for your time and this opportunity.
You bet.
Is it okay if I use this?
Yeah, we'll flip it on for you, and there you go.
All right. So my name is Jason Kuremi. I'm a medical cannabis patient. I have a question just for the community at large. Are our lawmakers authorizing a conspiracy to violate federal law? Federal policy denying funding to schools who allow students to use marijuana on campus has already affected at least one state, which is Maine. I don't believe for a single minute that our lawmakers or esteemed members of the city council would intentionally work together to violate federal law. Does this Sioux Falls-proposed ordinance and other ordinances around the state set up our citizens and neighbors to be criminals? Under current existing medical marijuana law frameworks, the criminalization of medical marijuana patients has a lot of serious repercussions. For one, gun owners can no longer purchase guns. You can still possess previously owned firearms, but if you're a medical cardholder here in Sioux Falls, you'll be denied purchasing new firearms. I don't think our city council, our legislators, or anyone else wants to do a disservice to their citizens and strip them of their gun rights while also making them federal outlaws. I'm glad to offer a remedy to this problem, a remedy that allows for us to protect our families and friends from becoming federal criminals and losing various rights or access to services. I have with me printouts of a resolution and a concurrent resolution that the Hawaii legislature passed earlier this year. This is House Resolution HR 112. House Concurrent Resolution HR 132. I helped pass these in Hawaii. I also helped pass at the Minnesota House a similar resolution, HR 1023. Over 12 years of my work as a lobbyist and advocate in Iowa and Minnesota, I've helped get this done. I'd like to have this be offered as a solution to our federal law problem as well. We've had a speaker speak, the city attorney spoke. This is very important. So under current existing regulations, the DEA allows for either a private citizen such as myself, or a state, to petition the DEA Office of Diversion Control for exemptions to state marijuana laws. Importantly, not a single medical marijuana state has been taken to court by the federal government. I don't think in a court of law that the federal supremacy clause is going to be the ultimate deciding factor. We live under a system of federalism. So I think that the states have a leading role to play on this. We can either wait on Congress to change federal law, or we can, as a state, comply with federal law, work together with federal law by filing for a petition with DEA under Title 21 of the Code of Federal Regulation. So I've emailed my full speech to city council. I don't want to waste time on this, but I'm very sincere that there is a real solution to this. It'll protect people, it'll protect the issue of public safety. That's what I have to offer. So I'd like to just draw attention to these. We have three other states leading on this. South Dakota, a state of law and order, one of the most conservative states in the country that respects the rule of law, can also be a leader on this. We just need to work and do our due diligence. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Come on up, man. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Cameron, and I do want to thank you guys for being here today. I think between Stacy and Greg pointing out some, I guess, great questions, and the question I was like, we don't know how many people we're going to have actually sign up for medical cannabis, but we do know we are the first state to pass medical and recreational marijuana. On top of that, we are bordered by two states that have had it in place, just kind of referring to the lawyer from Minnesota. They made a mistake, and five dispensaries in our city is not going to do it. We're going to have people rush in here just for flower. And I, like I said, I think we need to get in a space where we use our technology, whether it's social media, and kind of gauge what the community, like, potentially needs. And as far as the $100,000 for the licensing fee, you guys are already budgeting education in it, and I think there's going to be a lump sum of money from, I don't know if it's going to look like potentially taxes, but whatever the case may be, it's like, there's going to be money there for education. You guys are lump summing everything into the licensing fee, and I just don't agree with it. Thank you.
Thanks, Cameron. Anyone else to speak? Come on up, ma'am. Sir, you can come up next. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Erin Drew. I am not a resident of Minnehaha or Lincoln County, but I'm a concerned citizen of Moody County. I believe the current ordinances being considered are blatant slaps in the face to the emerging cannabis industry in South Dakota. And I'm not just talking to cultivators, manufacturers, testing and testing facilities, retail locations, or medical patients. I'm talking about the ancillary businesses and secondary industries such as tourism and agriculture, and even government agencies that will receive that revenue. And that is hoping on the promise that the funds are used to enrich the lives of the people that you are surrounded by, and that small businesses will dominate the partnerships made, rather than building a very limited market ran out by large out-of-state corporations to intentionally squeeze out the smaller guys. In addition to my full-time job, I own a small business doing freelance graphic design and marketing, and I want to be an ancillary business to the cannabis industry. It is my dream to be able to provide some sort of benefit and be something bigger than myself, and to enrich the lives of all the people that we reside in the same state with. And that's just not, anyways, in fact, I do find these measures extremely hypocritical in how they go against South Dakota value of supporting free enterprise and letting people decide for themselves. You may be, you seem to be setting the perception that cannabis should not be talked about, and it should be kept secret. The point of legalization is to move forward away from the archaic misinformation about cannabis users and how truly dangerous this natural plant is. By fact, our own national government is considering removing this from the controlled substance list, and if you didn't know, the human brain also contains a biological chemical called endocannabinoids, and our own brains have a cannabinoid receptors. And essentially, this discovery of us having an endocannabinoid system is going to rewrite human biology and physiology textbooks. So I encourage you to challenge your own beliefs and biases. How does a community, let alone a government, advance themselves? The people who represent these entities are not receptive to new ideas and knowledge. I encourage you to spend time educating yourselves on the economic, socioeconomic, and medical benefits of cannabis, and familiarize yourselves more with the people that you are supposed to represent before you decide to educate them. The more time, the more time goes on, the more people lose faith in the government, especially with this pending decision in the Supreme Court. And at least let us believe that a democratic process still exists, and that you have a deeper level of compassion and empathy. Pretty much also I want to conclude is that restricting the industry should not be an intent of these ordinances, and the revisions proposed should say, do say otherwise.
Thank you, Erin.
And do keep in mind that this opportunity is to prove to the state and the people that this government is not as corrupt as it seems.
Thank you, Erin.
And this is a way to establish.
Thank you, Erin. Come on up, sir. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Dr. Benjamin Aker. I am an emergency physician and also the immediate past president of the South Dakota State Medical Association. I rise in support of sensible limitations on medical marijuana as it is impacted in Sioux Falls. We're not here to say we shouldn't be doing it. We were opposed to the initiated measures, it's no secret, but we're here to say, let's continue thinking about this and do a sensible ordinance. And I want to be the one to thank the council for taking a thoughtful approach to this. We know that there are benefits to medical marijuana, and we have to weigh those versus the risks of medical marijuana. The benefits, as I'm sure you've heard from multiple speakers, you'll hear more, there are a few. are a few. And like any drug that I might prescribe, a drug for your blood pressure, a drug for the infection that you might have, I need to, as a physician, weigh the risks and benefits of that. And if the risks outweigh the benefits, then I'm not going to prescribe it to you. And we shouldn't be pushing that on the population. The risks of cannabis are bronchitis, increased risk of crash when you're driving a motor vehicle or operating machinery, lower birth weight of offspring of mothers who are pregnant and use marijuana, development of schizophrenia and other psychoses in patients who are more likely to have those kind of things. There's increased overdose risk in children, there's cannabis gummies that they can get and take one or more and be too many. There's learning memory or attention impairment. There's increased risk of mania in people who have bipolar disease. There's increased depression. There's increased suicidal ideation. That's not as you may think of it, the problem, but also increased suicide attempts and unfortunately, completion of suicide, meaning you actually successfully killing yourself is increased with cannabis. And we've had people come up here and tell you that marijuana never killed anybody. It does, because that's what it causes. Alcohol never killed anybody? Alcohol causes increased risk of many things as well. And we're going to now be giving this to anybody who has this card. We need to have a thoughtful limitation on it, not to get rid of it completely, but to think about that. You know, youth, as was spoken by another member up here, youth think that a drug that comes with a prescription is a safe thing to have, even when it's abused by them. A study in Colorado, now that there's since Colorado had medical recreational marijuana, found increase in hospitalizations that were marijuana-related, increase in emergency department visits from marijuana relation, and increase in traffic-related deaths. There's 491 cannabis stores in the state of Colorado in 2017 compared to 392 Starbucks and only 208 McDonald's. It is a risk to just allow there to be dispensaries willy-nilly. And again, I want to thank the council for its thoughtful approach, and I will be happy to answer any questions that might be available. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Aker. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Come on up. Good evening.
Evening. Tim Cant, business owner in Sioux Falls. Just a couple things, I guess, that I don't think have been stated and things that you got to think of before you pass this thing, is that in the state of North Dakota, when they issued the dispensary licenses, only one went to somebody from the state of North Dakota. They were issued to people from out-of-state and multinational corporations and things like that. I think that you need to make sure that if you're only going to issue five dispensary licenses, that's, they should only be issued to people in Sioux Falls. I don't think that people in Aberdeen or North Dakota or Minnesota or whatever should be able to have dispensaries in the city of Sioux Falls if you're only going to have five. And I know that, Mr. Mayor, that I think you're wanting the number of five to try not to have them saturated through the city, but you also got to realize with only five, you might not think so, but when they end up having product at these dispensaries, there's going to be lines down the block, around the block, around the corner, and a quarter mile down. Because this is what happens in Flandre right now. Every week when they do their, as they call, flower drop, they're lined up down the street, down the highway and whatsoever. So if you're trying to hide these dispensaries by only having five, you're sadly mistaken. You're going to end up, people are going to end up knowing where these are at because there's going to be people lined up down the street. The other thing is that Greg Nightzer had mentioned that there isn't going to be any available cannabis or whatever for maybe over a year. Well, that's just not true. There's available cannabis right now in the state. And if a person had a license right now, there would be availability to get that cannabis and be able to sell it. So if you think you're putting this off for a year, you're sadly mistaken. You know? And the other thing is, is that on the licenses, if you're going to only issue five, again, and the $100,000 fee, which I think is too much, but you're going to find people that are going to apply for it, there's no doubt about that, that the people that don't get it, I mean, I assume that that $100,000 comes back to you then. Do you have to pay the $100,000 upfront to get in the lottery like you do in the liquor license thing where you have to put the $1,500 up? But you never get your $1,500 back. If your license ever comes up, then you $1,500 goes toward the cost of the license. Well, you're not going to find a bunch of people to put $100,000 up and it has to sit there for a year or two or three. So that was another question, you know, that I had. I guess the other thing would be too, is that do these licenses have to be used in a certain period of time? If you're issued a license on November 1st, do I have a year or two to use this thing? When somebody that has a chance to use it might be able to use it within a week or two, but that person doesn't get a license, but somebody has a license that they're going to hold on to for a year?
Thanks, Tim. Anyone else to speak on this? Come on up, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Metley, and I want to thank you all tonight. Many of you know that I was the author of IM26, and I do want to thank you all for your thoughtful work on this issue. A couple of things I do want to address is the application fee. When I wrote IM26, it was intended to bring South Dakota business owners into this industry to walk us forward. We've had opportunities with hemp that we squandered legislatively. I thought with cannabis, we could walk our small businesses forward. What we're doing is making a barrier to entry for them. That barrier to entry translates to access being denied for patients. So Mayor Han Hankin, I saw you kind of shake your head when he mentioned that there's lines down the road in Flandre. He's not lying. I work there every day. So just to give you an idea, we opened July 1st. Since July 1, we have issued over 5,000 medical cards. We did a breakdown at the last city council meeting with what the map looked like. We think there's going to be about 66,000 patients just in Sioux Falls alone. So we were looking at, realistically, to serve that, you're going to need about 22 dispensaries to service just this area. I think we should go back to the drawing board and really look at your population, maybe have some conversations with us. I've met with Stacy. We've invited you down to sit down with us and take a look at our facility, and I'm going to extend that again. Before you guys do a second reading, we'd like to invite you all to see what we're doing, to see the reality of it. There's a lot of what-ifs. What could happen? What does it look like? We can show you what it looks like. Come down any Friday afternoon, and there are cars all the way down the highway. The line is around our building. We service thousands of patients a week because there is a need. And there is such a need that they're driving from Sioux Falls to us, they're driving from Aberdeen to us, they're driving from Rapid City to us. So I think we need to have a safe approach. We don't need to hide us. The voters spoke pretty clearly in November, and from your faces, I see that not many of you are used to these conversations. Imagine being one of the legislators that had to listen to us for the last seven years try to pass this before we put it on the ballot. This is an issue, and this room is packed tonight. I do imagine at the second reading, there will be more people. There's going to be more phone calls. We want to have a conversation that's real, and we hope that you guys will sit down with stakeholders and really talk to us. Talk to us about what we see for patients and what we know the need is. So I thank you, and I'll yield my 20 seconds.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Come on up, sir. I'm going to go with that guy in the back right there. Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. I'm going to speak to you from a little bit different tact.
What's your name?
My name is Matt Jorgensen. I am the CEO of Cannabis Chem Labs. We right now are the exclusive testing facility for native nations cannabis, and we hope to open up a testing facility here in town. Little bit about my background, in case you think that, you know, we only have special interest groups or potheads or whatever we want. I am 20 years of law enforcement. I was a forensic scientist for 20 years. I analyzed this, this exact drug for quite a few years. So I come at it from the public safety standpoint. We, we hear a lot about potency, we hear a lot about terpene flavors. We're here for more than that. We're here for the myotoxins. We're here for the fungus and the molds, and we want to have a safe product. We also want transparency in the industry. One of the things that I'm afraid of is that $100,000 barrier for me to bring a testing facility into your town. I'm small business. I'm not a big interest group. We're here to, to try to get as much testing done as we can, and quite frankly, we're going to have to try to shop elsewhere if the barrier is too great here in Sioux Falls. And I would hate to see that happen. You know, we talked about, we talked about at the invocation from the beginning, Pastor Garing said something about humility and taking public input, and I do want to thank the council for doing that. I know as of the first read, or the first meeting, one of the things that was completely off the table was testing. And just my being here and throwing that question out there changed that opinion. My hope is to have continued and further discussions and see if we can come to a better compromise. I yield my one minute. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Come on up, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Cole, and I just want to reiterate that 70% of our voters voted for IM26. They also voted for access to the medical cannabis that this would offer people. And that I think that state law requires access, not for you to restrict the access. So in looking at your restrictive proposal this evening, I think that the zoning that you're laying out actually diminishes that access that is set forth in state law for people to be able to get the care that they need. The designated caregivers proposal that you're offering, that doesn't work if someone doesn't have someone to go get this medicine for them. And in many of these locations, I believe there's not even bus, buses don't run. So that, I think you need to look at that really closely. And finally, I believe you're missing out on a great opportunity to help people in this community and listening to what's happening up in Flandre, looking at this a bit differently and realizing that there's a lot of medical and a lot of scientific use for this product. And I, as a mom of three adult children, would much rather that we here look at it in our state, we regulate it, we look at it, we allow for businesses to make sure we have a pure, good product for people to use. So you're missing out on opportunity. I think you are making sure that people don't have access that need it, and I don't think you're looking at the numbers of how many people that will really be needing this. And state law has now stated that there are conditions that this will help. So you need to follow the state law. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Pam. Do you want to speak, sir? You can come on up.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Steve Beiseman. I'm a member of the Sioux Falls business community and a registered voter with conservative tendencies. I was diagnosed at a very young age with juvenile rheumatoid arthritis. I started on prescription medication also at a very young age. Many of those side effects from those prescriptions are still yet to be seen. I will be prone to cancers, dementia, forms of paralysis, muscle wasting, and I was told as a teenager that I would never be able to have children. In my early adult life, sir, excuse me, I discontinued the required medications, and I chose instead to seek my own treatments. I personally had no relief until I found cannabis. I never pushed it on anyone. I never promoted it, but I do support people's right to choose for themselves. At the age of 25, I discontinued my cannabis use because of its illegal nature. With recent advancement in, in the cannabis industry and now its legalization, I have a chance to once again live my life, to live it like you can, to interact with the kids that I wasn't supposed to have, but I did anyway. There are many intelligent individuals in our community, on our council, in our mayoral seat, but there's also many that voted to pass this. So really, sir, what we're asking for as your voters and your constituents is that you respect our voice. It's all we're asking for. We understand it needs to be regulated, and we have no issue with that. But would you rather have cannabis, or would you rather have opioids, narcotics, things like that? I would rather have a natural remedy that's grown and produced by South Dakotans, not outside interest, not big pharmacies.
All right. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
Come on up, sir.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Nick Zacharison, 601 South Williams Avenue. Just to give you an idea of where I come from on this, I have no personal interest in using cannabis myself, zero. It would have been nice to have as an option last year when I was cleaning my gutters and then suddenly wasn't, and then, you know, the resulting knee surgery, I was prescribed opioids, and I was terrified that I would become addicted. Fortunately, that didn't happen, but this would have become, or it would have been a nice option for pain management in place of that, because opioids, as, you know, Mr. Nightzer mentioned, yeah, those are addictive, they have problems. Cannabis, to my knowledge and all information I've seen, is not addictive. But I will say, my wife has debilitating migraines more days than she doesn't. So I, I do have some skin in this game. And so I'd, I'd like to say just some points. As the first gentleman and others have said, this $100,000 fee seems frankly absurd. It seems like combined with that cap of five licenses, it's just going to end up a license to print money for out-of-state interests who are already well-healed as opposed to small South Dakota businesses. They're going to get left out in the cold while, you know, some multinational or, you know, Philip Morris or whoever just, you know, comes in and rakes in the cash. And again, as Melissa mentioned, yes, Flandre has issued quite a lot of cards in not even two months. So are we going to have 5,000? Are we going to have 50,000? Well, they've issued 5,000 in not even two months. So we need more than five. The last I saw Rapid City is 40% our population and was looking at 15. So 40% of our population, triple the amount of dispensaries proposed here. I don't get why that should be. And then the distance of 1,000 feet compared to, say, 500 feet for a bar, I don't get it. Bars are unquestionably recreational. This is more akin to Walgreens than it is, say, you know, the crowbar. Then as Dr. Aker mentioned, I believe, risk of crash using cannabis, well, that's simple. Don't drive, same as booze. Oh, kids got your gummies? Well, you know, maybe keep them away from the toddlers, you know, parents have liquor cabinets.
Thank you. Appreciate the input tonight.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this item? Come on up. Good evening.
Mike Zer, Sioux Falls. I just, I got a question, something that we should think, think of part of this ordinance. I mean, the order is not that badly written. Greg, Greg brought it up a little bit bigger, and I think the mayor's correct on this. I mean, how, how, we don't know how much, we don't know how restrictive the state's going to be, and I keep, I keep beating my head around it. I mean, does a, does a tribal government have the ability to give anybody outside the territory a medical card to allow them to buy marijuana? I mean, as far as I know, the state hasn't approved anybody yet, and we haven't given anybody anything yet. I think what, what we got also to think about is that non-residency status, you know? Who's actually a non-resident here in Sioux Falls? Who's actually a non-resident here in Sioux Falls? I mean, as a resident of Sioux Falls with a post office box in Sioux Falls, I mean, can I legally go up to Flandrew and buy a medical card? So we got to answer, we got to think of that, too. Can any doctor, whether inside the state or outside the state, actually give anybody a written certification? Or are we going to, is the state going to restrict it to just South Dakota licensed doctors? I mean, that's something that we need to think about, too. Like Greg said, we don't know at what point all the rules are going to be in place. And I think the mayor's taking a very cautious approach. I mean, we can set establishments at five, one, 10, we don't know what the demand is. And at some point, I think the state comes in and kind of preempts us there on the residency status. So, I mean, it's no different, I mean, selling a used vehicle to a customer, you still have to have a driver, South Dakota driver's license or mailbox in Sioux Falls. So I think that's one thing we have to think of, too. Define what a non-resident is in this town. And what happens if some, one of our citizens go up to Flandrew to buy marijuana? Are they going to get, when they get pulled over for speeding, is the higher patrol going to cite them for being in possession of a drug that's illegal? So that's something we got to think about, too. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Anyone else here to speak on this? Come on up, ma'am. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Catherine Riffle. As far as the cost and the prices of licenses and all, I think that should be brought down slightly, just so other people can have a chance to get in instead of big businesses just running away with it. Second of all, I do believe in marijuana as a health additive. I do not promote people lacing marijuana, and that's the difference. If you're going to have kids around and you've got jellies or whatever they want to call those things, you should be held responsible to keep them up in a locked cabinet. If they're going to get into a marijuana doobie or whatever they got, you got to find out if it's going to be laced. You don't know what them adults are putting in there, or who's selling it on the side of the road, what they're putting in there. I do believe in medical marijuana as something to help our bodies and our minds, our muscles, our tendons, you name it. Marijuana has a lot of good qualities, a lot of good reasons for people to use it as a medical additive. And I am going to support marijuana. I know what it's done for my son, it kept him alive. He couldn't eat, marijuana helped him to eat. Eventually, we lost the battle, but I'm still here for those that do need the marijuana. There's different kinds of marijuana as they talk, you know, and as it's been explained. So just open your hearts and open your eyes, open your thoughts, and make a decision to either stand up and support it or not. If not, then get out of the way of those people that do want to help another.
Okay. Thank you, Catherine. All right. Anyone else here to speak on this tonight? Good evening.
Hi, Stephen Ciano. When Greg said something about the, and then the doctor about the emergency room with the kid, and it's like, I'm wondering, what's going to happen? I haven't heard that. Like, is the kid going to get a serious case of munchies and raid the cookie jar, or what? Or is there something serious that can happen? I don't know this. So might sound kind of funny, but seriously, I don't know if there's any actual harm in this. Now, like this other guy, I do have a couple spinal injuries and other physical and mental issues for which I would probably be a prime candidate, but I have no interest in using this. And I know that Jesus changed the water to wine, and yet a couple people have spoken ill of alcohol in comparison. Now, I think that maybe we should have medicinal wine, but no, that's already legal, so never mind. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Come on up, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor. My name is Andrew. I'm a disabled, I've been disabled for over 10 years.
Can you raise that other mic up, too, so we can hear you a little better?
I can't hear you.
Yeah, just keep real close to the mic. There you go.
I am disabled. I actually called my doctor here a few weeks ago because I've done what research I could with this medical marijuana. My doctors told me they can't do nothing for me. Actually, to quote her, she said, "I wished I could help you, but my hands are tied." I'm like, "Ma'am, all I want is an appointment to have an evaluation whether I qualify for the marijuana card." I didn't even, that's all I asked for because I've done my research. Anyway, she's like, "I wished I could do something, but my hands are tied." So as it stands right now, it became lodged July 1st, but as it stands right now, I cannot even get an appointment to see my doctor to see if I could be evaluated for a card. I know I can get a card in other ways, but I'm trying to do this in what I think is the legal way. And I understand I need to have a one-on-one with my physician, and I cannot even get that appointment. I have called and tried. They tell me it'll take until November at the earliest. The five dispensaries is ridiculous. I mean, how many liquor stores do we have? And like it's been already stated, you're going to have hundreds of people blocking traffic if you want to sit with five dispensaries. The other thing I'll say, and I feel I'm going to pay for this, but what I will say, our governor, I voted for her. By matter of fact, I don't hide my feelings, I voted for you. What I am trying to say and bring that up is, our governor will not and did not, and it's prejudiced because of her beliefs. One of her statements was, "I never met nobody that got smart because they smoked marijuana." And then to put on that commercial, and we all know what I'm talking about, to say she's concerned over her voters, you know what? I voted for her. I will not vote for her again. I'm not the only one. It's, we're done with her. She is a governor of South Dakota, and she did not listen to the will of the people. So something for you all to think about. I tried to do it legally, and I can't even get an appointment to this very day. I tried the right way. "Oh, I wish I could do something for you, but my hands are tied." I thank you for hearing me, and I'll pray for you all, and I wish you to deeply consider this. And when it comes down to it, it's kind of mute because the bottom line, even like it's recreational. It'll come up in a vote again.
Thank you.
The people will be heard.
Thanks, Andrew. All right. Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? Come on up, ma'am. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Sandra Luther, and I'm a small business owner in Sioux Falls. When I found out and watched the medical cannabis get passed in South Dakota, I was really pleasantly surprised. I'm a lifelong resident, grew up on the Shion River Reservation, moved here 40 years ago. So I've been here a very long time. And so I was really thinking, well, with my business, I can probably add that to it. But with a fee of $100,000 for licensure and then restricting it to five, seems a little limited to the people here. And I think I've heard it all night long, how it's really going to limit really local businesses from expanding. And that's the whole idea of being in business, is to expand and stay in your local community. So I'm hoping that you will take a look at that and take a look at the people applying for licenses and realize that we have put the time here in the city and in the state to make it as successful as it is. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Sandra. All right. Anyone else to speak on this before we move into discussion? Come on up.
My name is Tom Van Kly. I'm a business owner here in Sioux Falls. I sell, I've been selling insurance for about 10 years here in the area, licensed to sell real estate, and we sell gardening supplies. And I really don't know, and just talking to all you guys, I don't know how many people we got to get in here to tell you you got it wrong. I mean, we could do this for hours. We could bring in the population. I mean, I don't know the demographic, I know 70% passed, but I'd like to know, and I probably should have looked this up before I come here, but I bet it's probably really close or possibly higher here in Sioux Falls, if I had to guess. But everything laid out here seems like the will of you, not the will of these people. I'm hearing completely different things, and I think we could keep this going as long as you want. The only guy here really against this was a guy who writes prescriptions to people. And I watch, I watch these people, I see these prescriptions, I sell these drug plans. And they'll put people on five, six, seven heart meds and not really have an answer for this stuff. So I'm not really buying the whole Big Pharma stuff. I think you guys need to listen to your constituents. It's not really that difficult. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. All right. Let's move into any discussion on this, and since the questions will be on the council, let's get a motion on the floor, I think.
Yeah, I'll move approval just to start discussion.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Nitzer and second by Jensen to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 7 on this. We're going to discussion, I'll start with Councilor Sale.
A question for the city attorney. Am I correct in think that the council's discussion is only geared towards whether this goes to second reading or not, and not on the substance of the ordinance?
That's a technical rule, as we've experienced through COVID there. It's really hard to contain some of that, but yes, the issue before the council is whether it goes to second reading.
Thank you.
Other discussion on the council. Councilor Nitzer, go ahead.
Well, I guess I would respectfully maybe like to go into some substance because I think it's been talked about, and I think people deserve to hear the discussion and not have to wait three weeks, if that would be.
I think it's just fine.
With all.
That's typically the protocol on our dais here.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. I just want to address some things that I heard, and then I'm just going to try to sit back and let others talk. You know, it's been brought up many times that it passed with 70%, and that is true. It was 69.2, I think. I guess the one caution I would give to people is, once again, I would ask people to read the law. And I'm not entirely sure that with 95 sections, whether one can make the leap that because somebody voted for medical marijuana, that they therefore are okay with unfettered access or storefronts on every corner. So I think it's a complicated issue, and so I'm not sure whether one can make that particular leap or there's any proof of that. I do want to address the Flandrew issue and a few other things I heard related to it because it's been brought up as a comparison. And I would submit that, number one, it's not a model, it's not instructive, and it's not comparable. And I'm going to tell you why. The first reason is because they have their own law. It's not state law. They have a tribal law, they pass it something in like January. And if you go read that law, there's a couple really important distinctions. There's actually more than one. But first of all, they cover the same conditions that the state proposes, but they also have a phrase that says, "Or any condition that a doctor says would benefit." So the world is your oyster in terms of conditions. Number two, a doctor from out of state through the internet or on the telephone can get you a certification. The state is not going to allow that. You're going to have to have a doctor in South Dakota. In fact, if you drive around the city right now, you see these signs all over the place that are getting put in by somebody. And if you go out to that website, it says, "Here you go, here's your internet doctor, you pay your money and you get a certification, you drive to Flandrew and you get your medical marijuana." So I would just submit that there's, I don't know that, number one, that's the model I would want to follow or that's responsible. And I would also submit that, and I should also mention that you don't have to be a member of the tribe to get a card. So they may have very much higher numbers, and their numbers may be going to the moon, but I would submit it's based on their criteria, not necessarily based on organic demand that there's that many people with debilitating conditions. And that leads me to my next point. Respectfully, Melissa said something, I think she said 66,000 people potentially in Sioux Falls would potentially participate in the program. Now, I believe we just had a census, and we have something like 192 or 5,000 people in the city, something like 132,000 adults, which therefore means that we would have to believe that half of the adult population of Sioux Falls has a chronic or debilitating disease or medical condition that produces one or more of cachexia or wasting syndrome, severe debilitating pain, severe nausea, seizures, or severe persistent muscle spasms, including those characteristic of multiple sclerosis. I don't think that potentially passes a smell test. Now, if you do cover a whole world of conditions, I could see potentially you may have thousands of people. But again, based on what the state rules are, and I have the regulations here of what they're proposing, they're going to have a pretty tight list of conditions, and you're not going to be able to go on the internet to get a doctor. You're going to have to get a doctor here in South Dakota. So I don't think we have any idea what the numbers are going to be in terms of how many people are going to participate in the program because the state program, at least for the time being, is going to be very limited. I would also submit if there are tens of thousands of people participating in a medical marijuana program, I would question how much, how medical it still is. Now, that, I want to preface this by saying absolutely positively, there are people with conditions, and they do use marijuana and they get benefit from it. And I do want to recognize Dr. Aker and thank him for speaking, and I do want to tell the council that he spoke at one of the summer studies. It was a first or second meeting, and it was really informative. And there are some other great professionals. And so we had one medical professional, and you heard what he had to say. And I think you should take that seriously, that although it definitely does have a medical benefit, it's not the same, it's not prescribed, it's not dosed, it's self-administered, you don't have the FDA approval, you're not going through the normal processes. So while it can be used medically, obviously, it's not exactly the same in a, a dispensary is not a pharmacy, it's just not. I do want to credit the proponents, a couple of them that represent the industry, who've told me straight out multiple times, and I have nothing against people that want to make money, but they've told me in different ways that medical is a loss leader. The reason they're getting in the market is because they are waiting for recreational. That's where the money is made. So notwithstanding the people that definitely will benefit, I get that. Let's be completely honest, let's be transparent here. The day after this passes, the discussion about recreational starts, that's really the endgame. That's what we're talking about. We're regulating a controlled substance, whether somebody uses it medically or recreationally. So I would just urge the council not to get too deluded or hung up on, you know, that this is just medicine and this is a pharmacy and all of that. It's a controlled substance that has been legalized, and we're just going to have to deal with trying to make it done responsibly. So I guess with that, I'm just going to, again, just recommend that people just read the law and realize that everything we're proposing is provided in the law. The author could have with one stroke of a pen with one sentence said that we have no local control, that we couldn't do this. It says that we can ban these other usage types, we can limit the numbers, we can establish regulations, we can do all of those things. We're doing exactly what the author and the voters approved us to do. And again, there's all of these unanswered questions. Let's give it a little bit of time. And yes, to set the record straight, as of right now, there is nowhere in the state program that you can get marijuana. You might be able to go to Flandrew to the tribe, but until sometime next year, you're probably not going to see it because the state is not going to have the licenses out and there's a whole supply chain issue. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, counselor. Other discussion on this item. Counselor Brecky.
Again, in speaking to the fact that we're being asked tonight to move this forward to a second reading, you know, I will be voting to move it forward to a second reading. I am, you know, somewhat disturbed that we kind of got this at the 11th hour. I've only had a couple days to review it, it's, you know, 5:00 on Friday, to review, you know, a massive piece of legislation, as our city attorney pointed out. I mean, it's the first time we've done a whole chapter in years. So I keep reading it, and I keep finding problems, and I keep reading, I find problems. I spent an hour and a half in the city attorney's office today. I've asked for legal advice and a written legal opinion on on several issues. I will be voting to move it forward. I'm glad we have three weeks in between. I would like to have a dialogue with these folks that I'm hearing from for the first time. I'd like to have a dialogue with Melissa. I'd like to have a dialogue with the industry. I'd like to have a dialogue with the, with the doctors. I'm going to make a few statements, and then I'm going to suggest that our council refer this to our regulatory committee. We have a regulatory committee that we just passed a couple of months ago, and the purpose of the committee was to, you know, to deal with overregulation. And I have a question. If this isn't being overregulated, and I think it should go to that committee, we have time to have a meeting between now and the three weeks. We can, you know, set the agenda for that meeting. If we wanted to even, you know, remove some of the restrictions of public input, we could do that, because I think as the, now that it's in the council's lap, I, I'm not interested in just looking at what's been brought forward, and I know it's been hard work and all, but at the end of the day, you know, I've got to make a vote on this. And I, and I will begin what, by saying, kind of repeating what I said when we had the working session. When we had the working session, I looked at my fellow council members, and I said, "I've done this before. I have implemented, you know, large-scale federal laws, the Telecommunications Act, the ADA," and that's where there was nobody doing it anywhere. I mean, there were, you couldn't even look at Colorado or California, because we all had to go in at the same time. And we just had a little piece that we were responsible for, because it was mostly, you know, all done by the federal government. So I think the parallels are similar. And I said, I actually pleaded with my fellow council members. I said, "You know, my, in my experience, in that area, you do a bare-bones ordinance, and then you see what the problems are, and then you legislate the problems. And if you do it that way, then you don't have all this extra stuff that adds cost to business, that adds cost, you know, to the end product, that puts all these obstacles in the way, and again, that whole overregulation piece." And so when I saw the ordinance, I will tell you, I was disappointed, because obviously, nobody listened to me, because this is not a bare-bones ordinance. And when you do that, you get things like, "We got to have these order, order, order control plans." You know, okay, is order control a problem? Are we getting, now we're going to have to have a, an odor meter reader, and we're going to have people go out and read it? I mean, why don't we implement it first and then see if odor becomes a problem? And, and then I see things like, "In the grounds for revocation, in the grounds for revocation, there's eighteen, which is more than any license I know of that we issue, and all kinds of detailed, you know, minutia that the license can be revoked for." And one that really troubles me is number six. And it says, you know, "As grounds for revocation of a license, failure to prevent diversion or theft of medical cannabis." So if you're robbed, if you're a victim of a crime, your license can be revoked. Let's say your employee steals from you. Let's say it's an armed robbery. Failure to, who, how can, if you, when you get into that, and you try to litigate problems that don't, you know, you try to legislate problems that don't exist, instead of waiting for the problems to come, and then legislate the correct, the correct, um, the correct solution to the problem, that's what you get. And I can point out things all the way through this. So for me, I'd like, I'd like to, to propose some amendments. I'd like to, you know, have some dialogue with the, with the group. I'd like to have dialogue with my fellow council members. If the other council members have some amendments, maybe, you know, again, through the regulatory committee, we could come to some sort of agreement before the second reading. So I've got some concerns with the approach we're taking. I recognize the work that was, has gone into it. I would, I, I am hoping that some of my concerns can be addressed, you know, in this three-week period, if other council members feel the same. And that's all I have. I might have a few questions for the city attorney.
Thank you.
But that's what I would have at this point.
Counselor Erickson.
Thank you, and truly thank you for all the input, whether you are on one side, the other side, in the middle, if you use the product, if you don't use the product, whether you voted for it or didn't vote for it. I would venture to say that you would probably be quite surprised that the vast majority of this council did vote for I am twenty-six. Probably not all, but I would say the vast majority of them. One of the reasons why I voted for it is because of the local control that existed in it. I was appreciative for that, and like Counselor Nitzer said, that's our job. You may like what we do or not like we, we do. Believe me, I've been here seven years, and I've made a lot of friends, and I've made hopefully not as many enemies based on the votes that I've done over the years. It is what it is. It's part of our job. It's hard decisions. I mean, this room was packed five months ago, talking about masks. It, it's not easy sitting in these chairs, and I know it's not easy sitting in your chairs as well. But with that said, since it's passed, we haven't been sitting on our hands, nor have you. We've all done our due diligence. We've all done our research. We've all had the opportunity to engage the public. I've sat with many neighbors, many family members, many acquaintances, many businesses. This weekend, I was out and about, and I took the time to say to them, "You've seen the proposal. What do you think?" Not one person, and I will tell you, I asked random strangers, said, "I think you can make changes over time. I think it's worthy. I may have a couple of concerns here or there, but in the end, you take all of that and you package it together." That, that was my strategy. That was my approach, is to proactively reach out to folks. I've followed Facebook comments and blogs, and whether it's in our state or outside of our state, reading through all of those, which generally I don't make a habit of, but really trying to gauge the emotion of where people fall on this particular issue. It's very emotional. Do I think there's medicinal benefits? Absolutely, I do. Do I think there's some issues behind it? I do. I agree with Dr. Ben, who, who has evidence of that. But that's the job of the physician, to weigh that risk and, and reward us. Does it work for patient A? Maybe it does. Maybe it doesn't. And so we've had the time. Did the ordinance just come out? I can't tell you how many times we had the opportunity to ourselves engage people. It's been seven, eight, nine months. Actually, it's been seven years, like Melissa said. I've been on the council seven years. It's been a topic of conversation for seven years. This isn't last minute. You may not like everything in it. I probably don't like everything in it either. But I find that compromise and balance. We've seen changes of this from all over the board, from a thousand one, a thousand unlimited, five hundred to this. We want to gather that data, and so we tried to find a happy medium that, again, not everybody's going to be happy with, but take that proactive approach. As a property owner myself, Counselor Brecky, order control is extremely important to me and the guests that stay in all of my properties. I don't want cannabis smoke in my properties. I just don't. Not everybody likes it in a ten-plex. If, if you have a doctor's note, and you, you have it, and you've received it legally within the law, and you want to partake in gummies, edibles, whatever it is, no problem. I do not want the smoke in my properties, because I furnish them. They're fully furnished. Don't allow cigarette smoke. I don't allow marijuana smoke. It's just part of my choice of running my business. I would also encourage the council, if you do have amendments, this is like a crazy deck of cards. Take one piece out, crumbles down, and it impacts five, six different other areas and chapters, that for the sake of the public, I think we owe it to you to tell you what those amendments are as soon as possible. So when that agenda is released, I personally, if I have any amendments, I will give them to the city attorney, so he can look at them and make sure. I don't have to share them with, with any colleagues, and I respect your right to not have to share them to me either, but we've got to share them with the public when the agenda hits. If you choose to share it sooner, please do so. But in the name of transparency, I think we owe it to the public to say, "Hey, you know what? Maybe it doesn't make sense to have a hundred thousand dollar every two years for a testing facility. Maybe it doesn't make sense for that." Until tonight, I didn't really consider that, so maybe that's something we should talk about. I don't know. I need to look into that more, and I've got the time. So while we have the time to do that, continue to reach out. We're listening. I promise you. May not feel like it, but I promise you, we are listening to every single person on whether you're on one side or the other. So again, if there are amendments, I would just encourage my colleagues, please get them out as soon as possible. So you can share them with the council whenever you choose to, but I feel like there's a lot of interest, whether it's business, whether it's personal, whether it's the city, whether it's zoning, whether it's our city attorney. We owe it to the public to be able to put those forward, and so I won't get into all the, the ins and outs, but again, because of that local control, that was, that was something that was exciting for me. But like Counselor Nitzer said, with a stroke of a pen, that could have all been changed. If you wanted it fifteen, you should have wrote fifteen. You gave us the ability to, to legislate how we really want to take this community, whether that's this or another number, and where that will land in a couple of weeks, I'm not certain yet. So thank you again, though. We are listening.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Other discussion on the council here. Counselor Brecky.
Some questions for the city attorney. Can you explain the lottery and how the licenses are going to be issued? Can you explain that procedure, please?
Yes, ma'am. So just, uh, the question that you're referencing, just for the sake of orientation, is one twenty-one point zero zero three. And there are actually two sections in the application process. There's the, the license application itself, but then there's the selection process, as I touched on earlier in my presentation, which relates to determining who gets a license. Because again, as we sit here today, we don't know if there are going to be three applications or three hundred. And so, again, akin to state law, there, there's a, a way to do that i- in, in a manner that allows for everyone to submit an application within a window of time. And the way that that will work is that the city would publish notice upon second reading, whatever that form, and passage of whatever form of ordinances there are. And then people have that window of time, and they submit them, and then either through our licensing specialist, or through a designee, which the city would be allowed to do, then they would be consolidated. All of these applications would be sealed, and then there would be a public meeting, in effect, where that lottery would be conducted, and all of those applications would be placed in order. And then once in order, then they would be opened, and there would ultimately be triggered a sixty-day process by which the city can review those to ensure that the applicants complied with the, all the requirements of the application, and those are all posted. But that's everything from identifying who are the officers that people certify, that background checks have been conducted, to fees being paid. There's a, a laundry list of those, and so the city will screen them that way. And in the event that someone fails to abide by that, then those would be removed, and you go on to the next one. And so everybody has an equal chance. It also eliminates the potential for some type of rush to City Hall, so to speak, where someone gets in line first because they, you know, they, they showed up at midnight the night before. Again, with, with the city, and I believe what the state are both pursuing is a balanced process that allows for everyone to have that opportunity. So, and, and then within that application process, also be a review of the zoning requirements to ensure that it complies with both the city and state law.
Then just a couple of further questions on how that works, and, because it's my understanding, again, from the conversation that I had with your office today, and I just need a clarification on, I think it's important that, you know, that my council member, fellow council members understand this as well, that it's not just one, a one-time lottery process. It's, that is ongoing. So after we go through the first five, then the only way that anybody can get a license, is my understanding, is if someone's license is revoked, or if there's no, it's non-transferable, my understanding, is non-transferable. So if your building burns down, or, and you can't rebuild it in the same location, because it's based on person occupancy, see, a person, location, and entity, then, you know, you have to go back and start all over again, right?
Yeah. The, the way that I would explain that is yes. So you have the initial five, and say, one of, one of those fives goes, goes out of business. Since the cap is five, there would, a license would become available, or in the event that down the road, as the discussion has been had, they decide, the city council decides to increase the number to, to seven or ten. Anytime there's an initial license available, that lottery system would be applied for the same purposes as this initial process, is to ensure fairness amongst the establishments that are seeking to, to open a dispensary. And, and I would add, by the way, that this, the lottery does not apply to testing facilities. It's just the dispensaries, the, the cap of five.
And then just a little bit about revocation. If your license is revoked, is my understanding, it, you know, and it's, it's any one of these eighteen criteria, and that's determined by our licensed specialist, and if that license is revoked, it can be, it's for a year, but then you actually lose the license, and you have to reapply for your license after the revocation process.
Yeah.
And that, and, and, but your own license is what would be available, again, but you would be subject to that lottery.
Well, you would actually, well, it's, it's, it's important to understand, as a threshold matter, there is, in effect, a progressive penalty built into the ordinance, and that starts with the civil penalties as provided by state law. And, and that's actually one of the ordinances that will be considered on first reading here in, in a bit, which is chapter forty, which brings the, the medical cannabis components under our civil penalty provisions. And so, so yes, available to the city would be civil penalties, and then suspension and revocation. And as I touched on in my, in my presentation, there isn't a, there isn't a, there is a process for appealing that proposed revocation or suspension or penalty. And then once that decision would be final, there's also provisions for appeal of that to an administrative law judge, and then ultimately to a court of law. So there's due process built in throughout the system.
Just a couple of questions about that. I, I don't want to go too deep into the weeds, but I do, I, I, and I didn't get a chance to talk to you about that at our meeting today. I, I just saw this and wanted some further clarification of it. And so I, I want to, you know, again, understand it, you know, as it's written, you know, referring you to that, that suspension provision, you know, violation is grounds for revocation is suspension. Again, trying to understand how this process is going to work. It says the city licensing specialists may revoke or suspend any license issued under this chapter upon proof by a preponderance of the evidence of violation by the licensee, and then by the licensee's agents, employees, manager, contractual operators, medical ca- so all of these individuals that the, the licensee works with can also, you know, I guess, create the grounds for a violation. A question about the licensing spe- specialists making that decision based on a preponderance of the evidence, and then as I understand it later, you know, if, once that decision is made, then it can be reviewed by the city finance director?
No, that, at one point, that was discussed, but as it, as it provides now, it's through the, the administrative appeal process within the city. But, but to go back to your, and I'm not sure if it was a question or a comment relating to the licensee of violation by the licensee or the license agents or employees, what that provides is that anybody acting on behalf of the, of the establishment is somebody, yes, who could subject that establishment to, to the suspension or, or revocation process. And, and actually, it somewhat relates to the comment you made earlier about revocation and, and theft, in that, yes, that, you know, as a, as a, as a controlled substance under federal law, some of these provisions are in place intentionally to ensure the security, and anyone acting on behalf of that establishment is subject to this. I would also add that the city licensing specialist component to the decision-making process is the, is essentially the same as it is for our alcohol licensing, for liquor licensing within the city.
Okay. I'm just, again, I'm, I'm, I've got some confusion here, because under, you know, suspension and revocation process D two, it says, "If the license holder disputes the suspension or revocation, the license holder has ten days from the postmark date on the notice, which is a notice of intent, or the date of the notice of intent that was hand-delivered, to request a review by the city finance officer."
Ah, yes. I stand corrected. And we, we did talk about different versions of this, and what, and what we did build in there, and I can tell you why we did it, is that you have the licensing specialist, specialist who makes that initial determination, then akin to a lot of other, uh, Then akin to a lot of other local governments and communities, you have the finance officer as, as an appeal authority, and then thereafter, it goes through the administrative law process. And so that way, it insulates the licensing specialist from being the final determination within the city. And so it, it creates an extra measure of protection who's somebody who feels they're aggrieved by the suspension or revocation process.
Okay. And then just one final question, because again, what I'm confused about, and I realize that this is probably over-technical legally for some people, but it's troubling to me that the, that the notice of intent triggers the revocation, and there is no hearing, that, you know, that the licensed specialist makes this decision by a preponderance of an evidence, and then it just automatically is revoked without any hearing to determine, to give the, the licensee the ability to produce any evidence in defense of their position.
Well, I would-
And I'll, I'll read you what I'm talking about. It says, under the, under suspension, it says, again, it says, referring to number one, "The license holder will receive a notice of intent to suspend, or a notice of intent to revoke informing the license holder of the violation of the city's intentions to suspend or revoke." Then you jump down to two, or excuse me, to three, and it says, "A suspension will be 30 days and begin 10 days after the postmark date on the notice, on the notice," again, which is just a notice of intent. So it's not a notice that you've been revoked. It's a notice that you intend to revoke, and all of the sudden, you're automatically revoked without a hearing. And then you've got this legal standard in there that you're holding her to, but there's no hearing.
That's, that's a question?
Yes.
Okay. Well, if you'd read one, two, and three in order, the notice of intent provides someone, and, and I would encourage you to not forget that there's a progressive penalty component to this. And we talked about that, and you'll see that again in Chapter 40. And so you have the licensing specialist who's engaged with the licensees, again, akin to our alcohol. And so there's an opportunity to provide those notices. And then when this notice of intent is provided, it provides 10 days, and we shouldn't go from paragraph one to paragraph three, we should note paragraph two, which gives them the opportunity to provide, to obtain that review from the city finance officer. And so you have, step one is the licensing specialist, step two is the city finance officer, and step three would be that administrative appeal component. And so this isn't, I mean, and again, you have any number of facts that can be leading up to this. But, and I don't know if, in a hypothetical scenario, you're saying this is someone's zooming from no violations to an immediate revocation, while they have the opportunity to address that through this process. And, and so-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap up this issue and keep the conversation moving, so, okay.
I was going to wrap it up. I, I will, like I say, I didn't, wasn't able to talk to you about, I'll talk to you about my concerns some more. But I, I do have, I do still have some ongoing concerns about, about the due process, because I think there is a due process issue there, but I won't take anyone any more time on it tonight.
Councillor Cowley, for yours.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to thank Councillor Knightsert for taking the deep dive in this and for the communications that he's made available to, I understand, each and every member of this council. And I think the, each individual's involvement in this was up to them as to how, how involved they got, and how, who they elected to contact, if they elected to contact anybody. I know that I, in addition to exchanging a number of communications with Councillor Knightsert and talking with him about this issue on the phone, also shared the same communications with the administration as well. I do agree with at least taking a cautious approach with this to begin with. That is one of the reasons why we have the conditional use permits that are now part of the ordinance that were not originally included, which would allow the 500, the potential to have dispensaries within 500 to 999 feet to sensitive use areas. Which, by the way, according with the map, by doing that, it opens up additional areas throughout the city, which potentially you could have a dispensary in all five districts throughout the city. So it's not going to put all the dispensaries in just one area. And I say the potential, because that would be up to the industry as to, to decide, or the business to decide where they wanted to establish their particular business. We've kicked around anything from as low as one, which technically meets the letter of the law, to what we have settled on here this evening of five dispensaries, a limit of five. And the reason I will support five versus lower is what I just previously mentioned, potentially allows dispensaries throughout the city, not just in a few areas. Most importantly, it avoids a monopoly by just one particular business. It does increase the availability to those in need, and hopefully would help to avoid those long lines that have been brought up. And I guess time will tell. We do have the ability to make adjustments as we move forward, as Councillor Knightsert phrased it, as we live this for a while. Sioux Falls is a city of 200,000, and it has the infrastructure, the safety professionals, public safety, and the ability to support up to five dispensaries. Limiting it even further, in my opinion, just simply is going to force it out of city limits into communities that don't have the ability that we here as a city do have. Five is, as I mentioned, is a conservative start for a community of 200,000, and we do have the ability to assess and adjust in the future based on what actually, the real information that we have available moving forward. One concern that came to light for this councillor this evening is a $100,000 fee for a testing license. While I'm not certain, I have a huge issue with $100,000 for dispensary, even though I believe that is pushing the edge of the, of the limits. I, I do have concern, $100,000 for testing facilities. And so that is something that I would like to look into more closely over the next three weeks. I do not know that there is a profitability that's potential, the potential profitability in testing as there is in dispensing. So my first thought is, that's a little steep, and if there's any amendments coming, that's one that I would potentially consider. As far as limiting it, a dispensary to just a business that's from the city of Sioux Falls, that, this is one question that I'll have for our city attorney. We addressed something similar to this not too long ago relating to arborists and the removal of ash trees due to the Emerald Ash Bore. And we had an out-of-state company that came in and underbid a lot of our local arborists, which quite frankly, was unfortunate. However, by law, we could not prohibit this out-of-state bidder from participating in that bid process. Would that apply in this case? Could we prohibit somebody from out of the city of Sioux Falls, somebody from the out of the state of South Dakota, from participating in this lottery system?
Actually, South Dakota law, 34-20G, addresses that and provides that at least one of the owners or members of the board of directors must be a resident of the state. And we did discuss whether that is appropriate now into the local level, and in the interest of that being pretty, pretty onerous in the sense that state law already addresses it, that's really what controls the state law.
A resident of the state, not necessarily a resident of the city in which the dispensary would reside in?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That, that helps to answer some of that. Again, I do agree with the cautious approach to start with and expanding as we have more concrete information available. To me, that's a logical process to follow. And versus doing too much right out of the gate, and then trying to reel it back in again, I think we'd have a, a lot of difficulties in doing something like that. So, and I'll close by saying, I voted for medical cannabis. I'm not just going to state that there's a lot of us up here that did, because I'm sure a lot of us did. So I'm not trying to deny or to restrict my own vote on this issue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would tend to agree with Councillor Cowley. I would imagine about 70% of us voted for it up here if you were to poll us. And that's what the, you know, that's what the state of South Dakota did with IM26. A lot of people have talked about the local control that was built into IM26. And I think that the approach that this ordinance is taking is a balanced approach. Like many people said, let's, let's live this, let's see what's, what's under the hood. A fact that in North Dakota, there are eight dispensaries. I think in Iowa, there are five dispensaries, and that might have gone down to three. They each, North Dakota as of last week, they had about 6,000 cardholders in their program. And, and for, or in Iowa, just June 21st, they had 6,616 people. And I appreciate those individuals that came to speak tonight, from the Minnesota law practice to the individual that's helped in Iowa and Hawaii. You know, the, the real reason that I voted for IM26 is for the individual in the back that came up and spoke, and thank you for doing that, Steve, the businessman from Sioux Falls that wanted to have a different treatment to tackle his ales. Or to the gentleman, and I don't remember his name, whose wife's migraines are debilitating. That is a really, really, really painful deal that happens to individuals. My mom has had migraines in the past, and, I mean, it knocks you out. You're, you're in your bedroom, lights off, no sound, it's, it's not a real, it's not a real exciting, but that's why I voted for it. And I think that's why 70% of South Dakota voted for it, is to give access to individuals just like your wife, if she needs it, and to just like Steve talked about in his testimony, which I appreciate. What I'll tell you is, when North Dakota set this up, and it's a different statutory, you know, system, they did it through their state and were doing it through the state and then also through local jurisdictions, the reason that they put in their $90,000 every other year was so that they could have a self-sustaining regulatory system built around their dispensaries. And I know that other communities in South Dakota are going to do it differently. And I know that other states have forcertainly done it differently, and there are people here that could educate me on that, I'm certain. But when I look at commonalities from Iowa, our next-door neighbor, our next-door neighbor to the north in North Dakota, and how they kind of rolled it out and said, hey, you know, let's see how this goes, I think that's a good way, a balanced approach. I understand, from some people's perspective that don't want any at all, you know, one is too many. And from the industry standpoint, which I appreciate your guys' conversations that I've had, but I, I don't know if we want to be the Wild West yet in this. But if we see what happens over the next couple of years, it gives us a lot of opportunity to do some digging on how South Dakota and how Sioux Falls views this. I think this is a really prudent, pragmatic, it's a positive result. There is going to be access to medical marijuana, medical cannabis, and the products in Sioux Falls. This initiated Measure 26 also says that every local jurisdiction in the state of South Dakota will have at least one. We're going to have five. There's 19 local jurisdictions within Minnehaha County and Lincoln County. I promise you, there is going to be access to medical marijuana through a variety of different people, just like when we talk about housing. It's going to be a regional effort, and that's, that's apparent in this as well. It's going to be a regional effort. And for how this has been rolled out, there have been people that have been listened to, maybe not as much as they want, or don't have the correct avenue to speak, or chose not to get involved until the very end. But there's been ample opportunity, almost seven months since this is, you know, pushed forward. So how I look at this, and I'm going to support this, is it's a pragmatic way of looking at an issue that's very, very new to Sioux Falls and South Dakota. And I think as we look forward, and we look to the legislative session, we look to the decision, any Thursday from the Supreme Court, any Thursday recreational could be upheld, and this is going to be a pretty moot point at, at that point. And there'll be a whole other segment of rules that are established outside of medical. So I think this is the approach we should take. I appreciate the effort of Councillor Knightsert, our attorneys that are in the crowd, as well as our city attorney, and, and the mayor, for pushing this out there. Because this is where I think we can start, and we can always, like I told the president of the association, we can always look at this and refine this as we move forward. Absolutely is something we can do, and, and we should look at that. So I appreciate it, and I urge my councillors to support the, the ordinance.
All right. Thank you, councillor. All right. We got a motion and a second on the floor. Councillor Starr?
Thank you. When I first got elected to the council, I won by 40 votes. You wouldn't believe the hundreds of people who claimed to be part of that 40-vote win. This is what happens when we do this without doing it informational and spending the time. It drags on, and then we get mad at each other because we don't, we ask questions that get into the weeds, and we don't take the time to have the discussion and be open and transparent. But I, I've got a few that I'm going to try to limit it to and, and do that. So first of all, yes, we can do this, but should we? You know, we talk about over-regulated in South Dakota and being the home of the free, and we want entrepreneurs to succeed, and small business is king here. And then we come with something like this that starts talking about, I guess my first question for the city attorney. It requires a background check as part of the ordinance. What does that background check entail? And what would fail a background check?
If you, if you look at the, oh, sorry. Thanks. If you look at the definition section, there's disqualifying felony offenses defined. And so when they go through the background check process, they have to certify that none of those individuals have a disqualifying felony offense in their background.
So they wouldn't have to take a drug test as part of their background check?
It's not, that's not within the, the application procedure.
There wouldn't be a driving record or a credit report as common when you apply for a job anywhere?
They have, they'd have to provide their name, date of birth, and a photocopy of a valid form of identification issued in South Dakota. Or it's equivalent in another jurisdiction.
Yep. One of the other things we've spent a lot of time over the years talking about is the corporate veil, and in how South Dakota that you don't have to reveal who your board members are and some of the people who are involved. We're starting as part of this, do we go too far asking for who actually owns the corporation and requiring that either a background check or some of the other things that we're doing as part of it? Because again, in South Dakota, one of the things we're proud about is that there is that secrecy in, in keeping some of that. So say a trust company wanted to invest in a, that, how far into their board would they have to do background checks?
Sure. One of, one of the key, key, key components-
Sure. One of the key components of the analysis for dispensaries and testing facilities is, as a matter of law, this is illegal federally. And so, it changes the landscape. Because as you look nationwide, and you see that states have adopted forms of this, it's not your garden variety analysis when it comes to business and regulation, because they're dealing in a controlled federal substance. And so, the rules are different. And so, yes, this does provide for background checks for officers, board members, agents, volunteers, and employees. And again, I'll relate it somewhat to the theft component of the controlled substance, is as the state statutes is drafted, and the department regulations and this proposed ordinance, it does contemplate that there is an extra level of scrutiny that would be allowed by law, again, starting at that fundamental federal analysis.
Part of my concern is that because we've decided that it's illegal federally, we start taking away some of those rights to businesses. And I get that's part of this, and that part of it's more of a comment that, you know, we respect these rights and we do that. But in this situation, because we don't necessarily like the product, we want to regulate it to death. One of my other questions, talking about odor control program or something, how would a business owner know when they would be in violation of that? I know it talks about, you know, at the property line, but how do you do that objective? Is it, are there testing meters? And like sound, we can measure sound in decibels. Is there a unit of measure for how much marijuana smoke we can smell or an odor that comes with it?
There actually is. And as we've researched that and looked at it, and I don't pretend to understand the science behind it, in some respects, this is drafted with that obligation on the business to control their odor. A lot of times dispensaries, and I don't pretend to be overly familiar with dispensaries, but they're not dealing, you know, they're dealing in prepackaged type stuff. So, that isn't necessarily a concern. But what I can tell you is, when we drafted this, we looked at other jurisdictions, some of which had two-page, single-spaced odor control that sets forth, and don't hold me to the terminology, but seven microns per 1,000 whatever. This is a simplified version of this. Again, as it gets proposed and as it potentially moves forward, from a code enforcement point of view, you would just develop evidences to odor, right? It doesn't pass the smell test, so to speak. Sorry, couldn't resist.
No, I'm going to make a weed joke here.
And so, the bottom line is, yes, the odor cannot exist at or beyond the property line of the dispensary or at or near places where people live or work, as a first-round limit to protect and balance the public health and safety component.
Well, I guess I just see us getting into that, you know, the definition of pornography. I know it when I see it. And I know it when I smell it, but I don't know how this puts an objective way of saying, well, maybe that was something else. Or by my home, there's a nine, 10-foot ditchweed plant that's growing, and I smell that every night when I go on my walk. So, how do I, you know, other than I'm bringing a knife the next time to cut it down myself? So, one of the other areas that I wanted to touch on a little bit, the thing that I'm concerned about, again, is the transferability. I know that we, what I respect as part of this ordinance is that we're trying to fix the things that we don't like in the alcohol laws. And so, we've kind of taken some of those, and it feels like that we've kind of said, we didn't like the list. We don't like being able to sell the license. We don't want to value the license. It's something. But what concerns me is that I start a small business, I have one of these five to get going, I spend the next 10 years building my business, you know, doing everything based on what the ordinance requires and state law requires. But now I can't sell my business to my kids because I can't transfer that license. I have totally billed no goodwill because the licensing part of it isn't there. So, the value of my small business as I'm building it basically evaporates. There's no, you know, most small businesses use their business as a retirement. So, how, what was the intent of trying to not leave a place for a business owner to sell their business?
It's a good question. A couple of things. I'll talk about the non-transferability of the license itself, and then I'll talk about just business sales. Because on the transferability component, I think the concern and the idea behind that was to ensure that there isn't anyone bypassing the intent of the regulations and the city ordinances, which is to ensure that you have scrupulous people selling a controlled substance in our community. On the business side, certainly understand the question. And what I would say is, anytime when you sit down with a client to value or sell a business, there would be some limitations, because, again, we're dealing with marijuana. But there's also business sales that include assets, the sale of assets and that sort of thing, which there is value that exists. And I'll use a testing facility as an example, which, again, I don't pretend to understand. But that's a, I heard the term kitchen, or there's a lot of gee-whiz components to that, which would maintain their value in the event that a business went belly up for whatever reason. And so, somebody wouldn't be without remedy in the event that their business struggled or they wanted to sell. But you're correct that the license process does have to be issued by the city for a lot of those public policy and health and safety reasons.
One of, I got two more here. One, under the definitions of a practitioner or the bona fide practitioner-patient relationship, the subitem one, a practitioner and patient have a treatment or consulting relationship during which the practitioner has completed an assessment of the patient's medical history and current medical condition, including an appropriate in-person physical examination. My concern is, one of our healthcare systems just sold their e-visit platform and have, you know, we're promoting, especially in the days of COVID, online visits with your physician. And so, to require an in-person visit is kind of going backwards from what, again, I know the intent, but it's taking us backwards from really something that our community should be very proud of, that we've pioneered e-visits and e-physician visits. And so, it concerns me that we're requiring an in-person visit.
Yeah. A couple of thoughts on that. One is, I understand from a technological point of view what you're referencing. And I know you understand the intent, which is to make sure it's a bona fide relationship. I think from an industry point of view, the concern would be, kind of like was alluded to earlier in the meeting, about some, a doctor on the phone, an out-of-state type $50 consultation, and here's your, you know, here's your card, go forth and conquer. The other piece I would mention in the definition section is, this is, again, restate state law. And so, even if this were stricken from the proposed body of ordinances, it's still going to be the law in South Dakota.
But is this state law or is this proposed rule that isn't finalized yet?
It's state law. It's in 34-20G.
Okay. I guess, again, my concern is that we're, as a governing body, telling a physician how to treat and how to act with their patients. Again, it's an over-regulation thing, where, again, in Section 3, it talks about the practitioners available to offer to provide follow-up care and treatment to the patient, including patient exams. I think, you know, even Dr. Aker doesn't see patients in the emergency room where he wouldn't be able to do follow-up care. He would send you to your internal medicine provider, or he would send you to another provider. And so, it takes his ability, if he chose, whether he used cannabis the way it's licensed to be prescribed, or uses it in an off-label process, which I think is also part of this overall process. So, again, we're trying to, as a local governing body, get into the place of regulating healthcare providers. So, that takes me to the next question.
If I may counsel on that, a good point. One of the things that I would point out is that, from a state law point of view, the consultation piece, and again, you understand the intent with the sensitivity of the substance itself, but it does allow for just that consulting relationship during which the due diligence would be a review of their medical history and that sort of thing. The other thing I would mention is that the state law definitions upon which we're relying were drafted by a proponent of this. And so, it really isn't the, you know, the legislature or anyone else who drafted that up. It's one that really the state is relying on, the definition as proposed.
So, this takes it, as under definitions, we're talking about practitioners, and it defines a practitioner as a physician. And I know in South Dakota that mid-level providers, nurse practitioners, and physicians assistants do write prescribed drugs or scheduled drugs. Is it the intent of this ordinance to take them out of the prescribing ability?
Well, yes. Again, dealing with a sensitive controlled substance, I'm sure the intent, although I, you know, I can't speak to the drafter's intent. We don't have legislative intent here. We have drafter's intent. But what I presume is that it's to elevate the prescribing source or authority to an actual medical doctor, as opposed to someone who it may be a little more concerning if somebody without that level of credential would prescribe it.
Okay. One more, and then I'll do there. Go all the way, I've said that about three times, all about. Under restrictions, section, I believe it's D, no cannabis dispensary or testing facility shall display a marijuana leaf, the word marijuana, or depictions of a person holding or smoking cannabis in any location visible outside the dispensary. Why did we stop there? You know, would I be able to call my dispensary Pat's Wacky Weed, and that would be less objectionable to the community? I mean, it just seems like we've taken a small amount to do that. And I get that we don't want casino signs or marijuana signs all over the place. But I'm not sure that, whether you use the term wacky weed, or I came up with a whole list of them that I think are probably more objectionable than if we were there. Like Bowls R. Us, just all the way down through all of the slang and terminology, and to try to get to the point where we're trying to protect the community from the word marijuana.
I believe the intent there is ultimately, from, again, a public policy point of view, to try to limit some of that. I can tell you, as we looked at the options, the legal options for what you do with signage, there are really two schools of thought, is you can select certain things that you would prohibit, or you can take the reverse approach and basically say, here are the only things that you can state. For example, as a matter of law, you could in all likelihood say, the only signage that's allowed is the word cannabis and a green cross. This was chosen as something broader, and it may or may not fit within the vein of allowing businesses to do what they want. The market does control some of that. And so, these are a couple of things I think that were important from, you know, from the mayor's point of view. And so, those are the ones that were chosen. And that, too, can be modified down the road if we find that it's, you know, been a prejudice to the community, and that's for the council to decide.
We talked this afternoon about, with the new police chief, about retention of body cam video and the usage of it. This seems, 180 days seems like a long period of time. Is that a long period of time? Or was that kind of a compromise somewhere in the middle of how long the video would be retained as part of the security plan?
Well, not to get out of my lane on the technological component, but I believe 180 days worth of data is pretty easily stored anymore. I think what that would contemplate is that throughout, there's a six-month period of time where, in the event there's a theft or something to that effect, that there's an opportunity for law enforcement to come back and ensure that that's protected.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Sale, you haven't weighed in yet. And then I'm going to, Counselor Nitzer, there's one more small thing, and then we're going to call a vote on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just say, I really do believe it's time we move forward with this. It's been nine months since the citizens passed this. It's been years in development. We've got four city attorneys here. We've got our own Sioux Falls CSI and Greg Nitzer. There's research to be done on this. They've done that. I think it's more important at this point to move it forward, to get people relief for their ailments, than whether or not a dispensary can have a marijuana leaf on the outside. We can deal with that later. I'd like to move this forward so we can get it, so people can get their medication. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nitzer, last word, and then we're going to vote.
Okay, thanks. One factual thing, and then one just procedural thing I want to urge other counselors. First, factually, just to, for Counselor Starr, and just to clarify for the public, we have really no authority over the doctor-patient relationship. That's all in state law. The only reason we're mentioning things such as that is essentially because it gets referenced in other things in terms of the establishments and who they can be selling to. So, 3420G-1 has definitions which talks about the bona fide practitioner relationship, practitioner, things like that, where we're using word-for-word what is in the law and what the proponent wrote. So, that would be, and some of this has been discussed at the summer study. I mean, they actually talked about potentially, why not tell health? And so, there was some debate about that and talk. So, that may be addressed. And then, I would also encourage looking at 3420G-55, which goes into the requirements for medical cannabis establishment license at the state. And it goes word-for-word into certain things like, at least one principal officer is a resident of the state. What you would find if you compare our ordinance essentially is that a lot of it is essentially word-for-word the state law. So, the state law would have to change for a lot of that. So, the other procedural thing I would say is, as people are contemplating amendments, I just want to just urge everybody to just make sure you consider, there's two important things here. We have two delicate dances we're doing. We're trying to track with state law, and we have timelines. Unless something gets delayed, the Health Director, the Secretary of Health has said that October 4th is a date that those rules would be promulgated. And we don't want to have a vacuum where we don't have anything in place. So, as you're working on this, I would just urge transparency, talk to the city attorneys, and talk about substantial amendments. And would my amendment create an issue where we might have to delay this? How are you going to fill that potential vacuum? And thinking about maybe amending it later or separately. The other thing is, all these ordinances, the license and the zoning, are inextricably linked. If you change one, you may create something that doesn't make sense in the other. So, you just have to make sure that they both harmonize. So, just think about both of those procedurally. And I would just really urge that there's not just surprise amendments or things on the fly, just kind of off the cuff, because this is just too serious. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. So, we got a motion by you, seconded by Jensen, to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 7 on this. Let's vote on that, please.
Counselor, Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
All right. That passes 7 to 0. We'll move on now to Item 55, which was moved by amendment.
Item 55 is a first reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordinances of the Sioux Falls, of the Sioux Falls, South Dakota by adopting medical cannabis zoning regulations. The Planning Commission recommends approval 6 to 0. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 7, 2021. Sponsors, the mayor.
As indicated, we just heard the licensing component of the medical cannabis. This would be the zoning component within the city of Sioux Falls. Some of the things we'll run through is the uses allowed within the zoning ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls would include a dispensary and a testing facility. Zoning districts allowed for dispensaries would include the C2, C3, C4, so our commercial districts, S2 planned unit development, those would be some of our institutionals, and then our pedestrian-oriented PUD, and also our light zoning districts. Testing facilities would be allowed in all of the same, but also would include our heavy zoning districts. Separation distances, we would have those as 1,000 feet between sensitive land uses. Sensitive land uses within our zoning ordinance would include single-family, twin-hometown homes, churches, schools, daycares, and a couple of other ones. And then also, it'd be 1,000 feet between other dispensaries and testing facilities. There is a conditional use option in there. If you can't meet the distance of 1,000 feet between sensitive land uses, there is an ability to apply for a conditional use for the Planning Commission for any separation between 500 and 999 feet. That would not include public or private schools. That is regulated by the state, and those cannot be closer than 1,000 feet to medical dispensaries or any medical cannabis establishments. Some of the additional standards, if you did go forward with that conditional use, if you were within 1,000 feet, we would need additional barriers, aesthetics, topography, some additional buffering to make sure that those land uses are separated reasonably. And then, there wouldn't be a conditional use option for the distance between those dispensaries or testing facilities. That's the basics of the zoning ordinance amendment. Get in, you've seen this map. We published this online. This would be the locations, our possible locations. This would be the locations, our possible locations of medical cannabis dispensary areas. The dark green would be the 1,000 feet, and then the light green would be the option of a conditional use. Similar map for testing facilities, the only difference is, you can see, there's some additional areas that are allowed as part of the heavy industrial areas like Foundation Park and some of our other development foundation land.
All right, thank you, Jason. All right, we'll take public input on this item as well. Just remember, this is specific to zoning, so this is only about zoning, signage, licensing, zoning only, so come on up. Good evening.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. I will stick to the topic of zoning. I don't want to repeat myself from last time, I think you all know that my view on this is it's too restrictive, but let me just clarify some very important reasons why. When you force us into only certain specific areas, we have less choices, and we have several criteria points when we decide what makes a good property, between what's best for the customer, what's efficient for the business, and what's safe, and what is good for our security plans. You're putting us in places where you're jeopardizing our security. When we're in areas that are not commercial, but we are a commercial business, we are more likely to be targeted by armed robberies and things like that, and that's something I've talked to the task force about. But also now, fairness is another part of this. When you look at this map, if you own land in one of those areas, you just won the lottery. You get an opportunity here. All the other landowners everywhere else in Sioux Falls has to go buy land, or negotiate a lease with one of those landowners. We've had three commercial real estate agents in the last month look for us. We might be able to find one spot. And I'm telling you the honest truth, call a commercial agent and look for property, and tell me what you come back with. You either own property right now today, and you're going to inherit this opportunity. I don't even think we'll see five dispensaries under this map. The map's very misleading. I mean, I get that it is accurate, it reflects the proposal, but within that, you have other factors. There's city-owned land, there's hospitals, there's land that's already occupied by other existing entities that are not going to turn into medical marijuana dispensaries. So you're forcing us to try to fit this industry that has a lot of demand and interest into very few areas that I think is very unfair when you consider that you're really picking who gets to go into this business and not letting it really be a process. I've never seen this anywhere, I've worked in 12 states. I have seen some zoning limitations, but nothing to this degree. I've also never seen a local licensing fee at $100,000 from a local government. You see it from the state of North Dakota, as pointed out, because that's funding a state department.
Still on zoning, remember? Still on zoning.
I know this is zoning, but as it ties in to the idea of fairness, this is not fair zoning, I think this combined with the caps creates a scenario that is ripe for corruption. I really do, because you're choosing specific landowners who get to inherit this opportunity. I would just say, look at what's happened around the country when you have strict license caps, high license fees, limited areas, it creates corruption, it creates litigation, bad perception, as evident tonight, with the public coming out almost uniformly opposed to this. I really want you to think about that. There's a mayor in Massachusetts today sitting in federal prison because he was involved with corruption. It started with a proposal like this. So I just really caution you to think about, where does this lead in terms of, you know, who has this land and who's influencing city council, who's getting favors kicked back to them? I really don't know, I'm just saying, these are valid questions and concerns, and you're not giving us a fair playing field for more people to participate in the industry.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
All right, anyone else to speak on this?
Hi, everyone. I spoke, some of my comments earlier were actually on zoning, but I'll try to stick to the topic here. Couple of things, the, oh, and I don't think I mentioned last time, $100,000 licensing fee is crazy for any business. What I want to talk about here is the cap on dispensaries and relative to zoning. So, I put together this map with the help from the city and parcel data. Red areas are owned by the city or state government, blue areas are owned and/or occupied by entities that will almost certainly not allow a dispensary to open. This includes, but is not limited to Augustana College, or Augustana University, rather, Sanford, Avera, Poet, the Empire Mall, Costco, Lewis, Walmart, Target, et cetera. I spoke with at least four reputable commercial real estate companies in the last few days to ask what would be available today in the green zone for a dispensary. Answers ranged from zero, someone said one, someone said maybe two, and someone, Bender thought they could get 10. So, haven't verified that, but you've got a de facto cap here. No need for a five number cap licenses. You get that because you have 1,000-foot setbacks between cannabis establishments. Caps are bad policy. It's been pointed out that there are eight dispensaries in all of North Dakota. It's true. So five in Sioux Falls seems reasonable at face value. I believe it's been mentioned before, only one license went to a North Dakota company, one license. The rest were awarded to large cannabis corporations from other areas, including companies from Europe and Canada. Sioux Falls is proposing something very similar to North Dakota, cap licensing and $100,000 fee, which would make it impossible for the vast majority of South Dakota entrepreneurs and business owners to capitalize on the opportunity to get into this new industry at the ground floor. Just because the government can do something doesn't mean it should. We've heard several times that we're following the law, we're doing what we need. This overregulation is harmful for business, and, I mean, you can see the map, it cuts out half of the green areas, like, I would rather see more restrictive zoning, frankly, and no caps, because what you're gonna have here is giant companies that come in, hundreds of millions of dollars, they'll get rights to a property, they'll buy properties, throw as many applications as they can, and they'll end up with most of them. It's just the way that we've seen this work in many other states. Get rid of the caps, like, it's bad, bad, bad policy. Rapid City's going with 15, by the way, by the looks of things. I would rather just not have a cap. You don't have to put a cap in it, please don't put a cap in it. Thank you.
Got it, thanks, Ned. Come on up, Mike.
Want to hear from Sioux Falls? I just, in the event this one, the zoning map does pass, what, can we go back and amend it anytime in the future? As we get more information, as the more we know about this industry? And how much discretion would, how much discretion would the city council have in placing these industries, 500 feet here, 400 feet there? As we go about, as we, as this industry expands, and we get more knowledge of what the state, as the state wants to do? Is this something that you'd be compromiseable to amend it as we, as more information comes out? I mean, this is, to my understanding, this is just a starting point, we, you know, without so many unknowns? But what's, what's some discussion that come out? Can it be about being amended in this? If we were to, if we pass this tonight, or the next, and on September 7th, can we, can it be amended down the road? As the council, as more and more businesses come into Sioux Falls, and the council has discretion for placement? That's just, I thought I have. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Mike. Come on up, sir.
David, it's Okitesi again. With the zoning bit here, we're trying to scoot all of these dispensaries off into some dark corner away from the rest of the world, and what that does in part is enforce a traditional anti-cannabis mentality that is not justified by modern science. We really don't need to do that anymore. And the people of South Dakota voted quite firmly in favor of allowing medical marijuana. That's the vote, and I encourage everybody to respect that. We need to treat medical cannabis dispensaries like pharmacies. They're not subject to all of these roles, roles and roles, roles. They're just allowed to work like a business, and that's really what we should do. And, you know, like tradition, it's gotta be a happy picture at the end, so enjoy South Dakota.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on item 55 here on the zoning? All right, not seeing any. Then let's get a motion on the floor, and we can, well, let's first ask a few questions for Jason, specific question for Jason, then we can move into discussion, too. And the motion will be to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 7th?
So moved, Neitzert.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Neitzert, seconded by Jensen on this item. Discussion, counsel on item 55. Counselor Neitzert, go ahead.
I have a small presentation, but thankfully for most, about half of it has been covered already from the last discussion, so we're gonna just kind of jump. I'm gonna let him pull this up, hopefully. So, and Jim, you can just go to the next one, that was just definition of sensitive uses. You know, again, the most effective way to prevent incompatibilities, and when you ever, whenever you have a use that could create incompatibilities, you look at distances. This allows a two-tier system where you could be 1,000 feet, no permit, or no public hearing required, you just go get your permit, and if you're gonna be as little as 500 feet from a sensitive use, which has been defined for a long time, then you would have public input, which is a good thing. And then we're trying to do a separation between medical marijuana establishments, so we don't have undue concentrations. You hear complaints all the time that there's alcohol in every corner, and there's video lottery in every corner, while the state ties our hands. We don't really have any way to stop that, but in this particular case, we do, and this is a way that we can, again, start slow. It's very difficult to come up with what you would analogize marijuana to, even medical marijuana, because, first of all, we don't have a business established yet, we don't even know what it looks like, and we don't know what people are going to expect of it. And I will, once again, pose that I would not make the leap that somebody voted for I am 26 therefore means that they're okay with marijuana dispensaries next to their house or next to their daycare. I don't, I don't know that that's been established. Marijuana is the only controlled substance that holds itself out to be both legitimately used for medical and recreational purposes. That's a very interesting thing. It's still legal by federal law, and I'll once again repeat, a dispensary is not a pharmacy, it's a, it's not even close. So, how to match it up becomes very difficult. Do you call it a liquor store? Do you call it, you know, what do you call it? It's a tough one. I'm gonna jump past this, we talked about the two of the four uses. The community standard, I think this is really important. So, the 2013, it's a bit of history, that the last zoning ordinance was adopted in 1983, that was the 1983 zoning ordinance. That lasted until 2013, when Shape Places was adopted, and I wasn't on the council, but I was kind of a zoning wonk at the time, and I provided input into it and tried to be involved in it. And the major thing with Shape Places was that it was completely rewritten, and it was written reflecting 30 years of experience from planning staff, from city councils, from what citizens expressed of what their concerns were with all of the different uses that existed. In some cases, they found that they required conditional use permits for things that nobody ever showed up for, nobody cared. So they took it out, so that they didn't have all that red tape. But then there was other things for which people always came and they always had the same concerns, I want a fence, I don't want it next to my house, whatever it may be. All of those rules were built in based on that. And so we have those standards, we know what people expect for apartments, how far they want them to be away, and what their concerns are about height, we know what they want for car washes, or concerned about noise, they want fences. We don't have an established community standard here yet, we have no idea. I would submit, I'm not sure most individuals necessarily know what they even feel about it until they live it and they see it. So in the absence of community, of a community standard and real-world experience, it's, again, I'm just gonna urge caution in that, start more cautiously and limited, and then we can always open it up. Once you establish a use, and it's next to something that you don't want it to be there, it's virtually impossible to get rid of, and then it's stuck. So, we're just simply proposing, let's start in very commercial areas, and then let's reevaluate it in a few years, let's see how it goes. As far as planning ahead, I, that's, I get it, medical is on the table, but again, we know adult use passed once, it's probably coming, and we don't know how it's gonna come. There may be scenarios in which state law, or somebody brings something that says that wherever you have medical dispensaries, can get a license and they can sell it recreationally. So I would propose that would probably be prudent to create rules in which you put these things somewhere where you would feel good and okay that it was selling recreational, and you don't delude yourself into thinking, well, it's just a pharmacy, and it'll be just fine, and then a year later it's selling it recreationally. You do this once, then you don't have to worry about coming back again. And I would also propose that as a policy matter, if I was gonna have both, I would like to have them be able to have it in the same location, because when we have it in one location, you don't have duplication, so I think that's a good public policy. So, again, it's just about trying to minimize potential mistakes, because we don't know what we don't know. So this really maintains consistency with our sensitive uses, it provides access and options, it does it prudently, it gives citizens the ability to provide input with conditional use hearings if they're somewhat near sensitive uses, which will be really important, because that's how you establish the community standard. Maybe nobody shows up for these hearings, maybe nobody cares. Maybe people show up and they're very, very concerned. We want to hear about that, and we will. It allows us time to live and learn this, we can always come back, and to Mike's question, yes, all we have to do is change separation distances, and that map changes. That map wasn't us selecting properties, it's just selecting a number, and then it's just whatever the map spits out. So there's no good old boy or anything like that. I mean, if you change the number, then you see more dots on the map, that's just the way it is. And I guess I would submit that I would be very cautious about deciding, potentially, I mean, we see apartment, people are concerned about apartments all the time. So, the idea that they might just be okay with having a dispensary or marijuana right next to their house, or their daycare, right out of the gate, I think is probably not a wise thing to assume. Let's wait and see, let's give this a try, we can amend it. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Other discussion on this item? We got a motion, second, Counselor Brecky, go ahead.
I think my, you know, I, my biggest concern is, you know, have we, you know, by, a combination of the zoning and all of the other heavy restrictions that we're putting into place, you know, 18 different ways it can be revoked, and once it's revoked, it goes back in the pool, so, you know, it's really not just a year, it's not transferable, you know, the 1,000-foot rule, and the effects of the 1,000-foot rule on the map, so many different regulations attached to it, and the 1,000-foot rule. Have we actually created, you know, a de facto ban? I mean, have we created a situation where no one is really able to run a business under this, under this setting? I mean, I guess we'll see, I realize, you know, that this is what's being proposed, and there's, you know, some support for it, but that is a concern that I have. I was concerned with just the 1,000-foot rule alone, particularly when we were looking at only one dispensary, I mean, I thought, whoa, can we even do that? Is that, and then, you know, we've changed it, you know, and now we've said five, but again, when you look at the alternative map, and, you know, and the conditional use proceedings, and, again, the 1,000-foot, is the 1,000-foot rule even, does it even have any meaning? You know, does it even exist? And then with all the other restrictions that we're putting out. So I have that concern, again, I spent an hour and a half of the city attorney day, we talked about that, you know, asked him for written legal opinion on that question, I'm wanting, you know, their advice on the legality on some of these things, you know, to help me make a decision on my vote. So, that's my concern. Again, it's, we're really heavily regulating this. It's not my preference, but I respect and I do thank the people and the hard work they put in. I mean, I understand, you know, in other jurisdictions, in some of these areas, they've even regulated more heavily than we are, which surprises me, but I, again, in having conversed with the city attorney today, that's what they tell me is the situation, that we are more in the middle area of regulation than we are at the top end. So, I, you know, I just would share that, but I am definitely gonna push it forward for further discussion, but, you know, am, have that legal concern about that. about that.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Other discussion on the zoning piece? Counselor Starr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance does what it's intended to do. It regulates the industry out of business. It's clear that that's what we wanted. I think Counselor Knightzert said that as part of his presentation. We want to push it out as far and make it as hard to, to find a location as possible. We heard during public input that, you know, the more we try to regulate this and try to keep the genie in the bottle, the harder, the, the more that we don't eliminate the black market as part of this. And that's the intent of this ordinance, and that's what it's gonna do. One of the things Counselor Knightzert said was, is that, you know, marijuana is the only thing that holds itself out as medicine, and that it's medicine and recreational. Well, alcohol is the same way. You know, alcohol is laced in everything from cough syrup to sleep medications to, I had a distant family member die in the last month from drinking mouthwash that has alcohol in it. So, to say that, you know, it, it's medicine and recreational, I, I get it. And the bottom line is, is we're doing the intent. What concerns me is that we're gonna put these five licenses out into the marketplace. People are gonna overpay for them. They're gonna buy expensive property because they're limited to where we can put them, and then we're gonna say, "Uh-oh, we made a mistake. Maybe we do need to go to eight, or 10, or 15, like Rapid City." And now we just devalued their investment in the properties that they invested in to put those facilities in. So we talked about stranded investment before, we're, we're messing around with things by trying to keep the genie in a bottle that's already out. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on this? Counselor Erickson?
I'm not sure I heard Counselors Knightzert say that, but I would caution anyone to speak for anyone else. If, if someone's intent is that, that is their intent, if they're not speaking it, Counselor. So, that is not my intent, so if you want to speak for yourself, you go right ahead.
You spoke for me this afternoon. You had no problem telling me what I said to the.
Point of order. Point of order.
Counselor Starr, you do not have the floor.
She doesn't have the right to.
Point of order.
Counselor Starr.
If you choose to speak after me, you're welcome.
I will. I waited this afternoon.
Counselor Starr, Counselor Starr, let's, let's give Counselor Erickson the floor. I can go to you next. Counselor Erickson, go ahead.
I made it very clear that I did support this, and I supported access. There are more than five locations that could, could take place. I've heard concerns from several casino owners that would like to change their location into some sort of location, because they own the facility already, but unfortunately, the way that it's written, it won't work for them. The whole intent behind my vote and support of this was, it started at 1,000. And for me, I, I wanted to find a way that we could create the data and collect that data for what, what that looks like. Does anybody really care? If they don't care, let's, let's talk about it. What are those next steps? So, the intent for me, I want you to hear it from me and not somebody else, is the fact that I like that CUP component. We talked, I know Counselor Kylie and I were really big on that component of saying, "What if we did this? What if it looked like this?" Again, you may not like everything in it, but we wanted to collect the data to know, is anybody gonna really give a rip? They might. They might not. We get CUPs, and sometimes we override those neighborhoods, and that is an option, that people come forward and say, "Hey, we want to put this restaurant in, it's close to this or that." What does that look like? We, we can, we can do that still, if it makes sense, but we want to hear from people, and we want to collect that data. We heard loud and clear that the voters said this. You gave us local control. You gave us the ability to take a pragmatic approach in a super-red state. What were you expecting? I, I think this is, you knew this was going to happen in a very cautious and pragmatic way. I, I think the writing was on the wall from the beginning with that. So, for me, my intent is not this one-and-done, we're never gonna open it up, we're never gonna talk about it. We've continued, year after year after year, to talk about changes in the legislature, in local zoning. We look at increasing fees, decreasing fees. We look at getting rid of fees. We look at making some changes to what sensitive use looks like. None of those changes are in this at this point, but we're always talking about what that means and what it looks like. That's my intent. My intent is, I'm giving you my word that, I, I don't implant, I'm gone soon, so I guess once I'm gone, whoever sits in this chair, my hope would be that you hold their feet to the fire to continue to look at this. If no one says boo about 500 feet, well, I guess we know where we're at. We know what that means. We have to collect the data. That's plain and simple for me, and why I appreciate the approach on this one, because to be honest, the beginning stages were 1,000 feet and 1,000 feet only. You like that? Didn't think so. One and at 1,000 feet? No way. We're trying to find ways that we can compromise and pull that back in together. And when I say "we," I'm not speaking for everyone. I, I've had conversations with the mayor, and Greg, and individual conversations through that. And so, trying to find that balance and compromise, it may not be what other states are doing, but it's the way it was written. And so, finding that balanced approach is super-important, and to not have it regulate out of the market, that's, that's not the intent. You have more than enough space, may not be what you already own, and I know that's not a good feeling or a good, good deal. I get it. But have those conversations. The city is committed to making sure that they're answering those questions for you. They've been answering any question I've had throughout the whole process. If you have specific questions about property you own and you want it confidential, bring your attorney with and sit down and talk to them and say, "Hey, is this gonna work?" And if you get one of the licenses, you know you're off and running. Emmett, I met you when I was in the legislature 10 years ago, and you were working on this particular issue 10 years ago, and here you are, tenfold, all the way back at it. So I appreciate your approach, you've always been respectful to me, but I also know that not everybody has been. And so, the, the approach of, you get more with, with, I don't even want to say the saying, because I'm gonna mess it up anyways and have a total blender on there, but, you know, there, you get more by creating those relationships and having conversations. I know you'll answer my call. I'll answer your call. I read all your emails. We've got that relationship. And so, working through that process is so important. I know you're gonna leave mad, and you're not gonna get everything you want, whether it's tonight or if there's changes between the next time, but we're working through that process. This is new for everyone. You've worked in the industry for 15 years, maybe more, 20? So you know that industry. We don't. You've entrusted us to make these laws and make those changes. We're listening. We're doing the best we can to making sure we have a balanced, cautious approach. We're listening.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. I think Counselor Erickson said it very well, in terms of, we're trying to find a balance and a compromise here, so that we get something closer to what is really gonna work for, for everybody and for this, this community, so that we can get something passed, so that we can actually live this and then learn from it, and, yes, potentially change it as, as we can evaluate the actual facts on the matter. But misrepresenting and distorting the intent of this ordinance, as, as Counselor Starr just did a few moments ago, simply and unnecessarily inflames the situation and makes it something that it is not. Let's just maintain a sense of decorum, be respectful as we debate this, so that we can move forward in a respectful fashion. That's what I request of our, my fellow counselors. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, any other discussion on this, this topic? All right, I'm not seeing any, so let's take a vote on the, the motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 7th.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that one passes, seven to zero. We'll move on to item 57.
Item 57 is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 158, 2006 Joint Zoning Regulations, Lincoln County and Sioux Falls, Subchapter C, Commercial District, and definitions. At the August 11th, 2021 Joint Planning Commission meeting, Lincoln County voted three to one for approval. The city voted three to one for approval. Motion passed. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for the joint city, for the joint Sioux Falls City Council-Lincoln County Commission meeting of Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. Sponsors, the mayor.
This is our joint city and Lincoln County zoning ordinance amendment for medical cannabis establishments. Up here is your map with our joint jurisdiction area with Lincoln County. It's everywhere that's in the white, that's not part of the city of Sioux Falls, and everything south of 57th Street. I just want to reiterate that this zoning ordinance was a collaboration between the city planning office and also Lincoln County, Toby down in Lincoln County. Some of the, the things within this zoning ordinance and that joint jurisdiction area is, the uses allowed would be all four of them, dispensary, manufacturing, cultivation, and testing. The zoning districts they'd be allowed in would be C Commercial Districts and then the Industrial Districts. Separation distances would be 1,000 feet from sensitive land uses, and in the county, that would be single-family dwelling, public and private schools, church, public service facility, and parks. And then also, 1,000 feet from sensitive land uses, or, excuse me, 1,000 feet from any medical cannabis establishment. Lincoln County, this would be a permitted use, so there wouldn't be no CUP option. If you wouldn't be able to meet those separation distances, it just wouldn't be allowed. This is the map of the joint jurisdiction area of properties that are zoned commercial and industrial. As you can see, the majority of the area is zoned agricultural or residential, something other than that. So this, a lot of these establishments would be a two-tiered approach. If you had wanted to go into an area that was not zoned commercial industrial, you'd have to get your zoning first, and then, and then your use allowed. And then this would be the, a map derived with Lincoln County with some of the locations that all four of these establishments could go. The majority of them would be, would be kind of located at that T intersection on I-29 and then the T road.
All right, that's it. Thank you. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to item 57 on the joint jurisdiction piece? Come on forward.
Hi, everyone. Might be the last time I come up here tonight, so hopefully you're not tired of me yet. Really appreciate the work that the, the, both governing bodies have done on this. I actually live in the joint jurisdictional area. And to Counselor Erickson's point, the, the change from 1,000 to allow conditional use in Sioux Falls was seen by us, and we, we very much appreciate that. What I wanted to come and talk about here today is to improve this a little bit. Lincoln County, as you all know, took a very free-market approach to zoning medical cannabis establishments. This joint zoning ordinance as written, in some ways, is actually more restrictive than Sioux Falls, when it, when it comes to the no-conditional use, and, you know, 1,000-foot from single-family dwellings, et cetera, et cetera. I think, given where Lincoln County is, and, you know, cautious approach that Sioux Falls, or the direction that you all are taking right now, this should probably be more of a compromise between Lincoln County's current language, which is, quote, "With, not within 1,000 feet of a public or private school, including daycare facilities with more than 21 children." And that's like the only setback that they have. And, you know, combining that with whatever Sioux Falls ends up landing on, current proposal, we just spent a lot of time talking about with conditional use at 500 feet. So, I would kindly ask for an amendment to reduce, or to add conditional use at 500 feet, certainly for single-family dwellings and probably all the, all the rest of them, except for schools, which is covered by state law at 1,000. So, would just like this to look closer, or a better blend, I guess, of what Lincoln County and Sioux Falls has. And if you want to take that setback down to 300, I'm totally fine with that as well, but thank you all so much.
Okay, thank you, Ned. Anyone else here to speak on item 57? Come on up.
Hello again. So, I had a really good experience working with Lincoln County, their commissioners, their staff. They were an open book with questions, meetings, everything. And the end result was a very, I think, open ordinance for us to do business in Lincoln County, so we're grateful for that. What the area in question here is in Lincoln County. So I would just like to agree with Ned that you try to match that conditional use criteria down to 500 feet. Thank you, Counselor, for pointing that out. That is a step in the right direction, and I think if you're gonna apply that in Sioux Falls, you should apply that in this joint jurisdictional area, just for the sake of consistency. Not really debating which ordinance is better or worse, I guess, but let's just try to mesh them together. So that's all I have, try to keep it simple this time. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Emmett. Anyone else here to speak on this? Come on up. Hey, Mike?
Mike, again, somebody, I just, I thought, this came up during the planning commission, I think Greg, you were there that night. But if we go with this firm 1,000 feet, just to put into, into discussion, what, what would happen if a church, or a school, or one of those other sensitive areas move in, move within that commercial zone? Just for a sense of discussion, how, how would that affect the, that area? And what's your, what's your guys' opinion on that? If, if that were to happen, would they be, would the, would these establishments be grandfathered in, or would that, would that affect future zoning going forward? Just my thought.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else here to speak on this topic? Item 57. All right, not seeing any more public input. Counselor, you got any questions for Jason on this one? All right, I'd take a motion, that would be to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 24th, at our joint meeting.
So moved. Knightzert.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Knightzert, seconded by Jensen on that. Discussion council on this one. Counselor Knightzert, go ahead.
I only have one slide this time. So, when we were talking about this, and it's important to note that, as, as this body knows, both bodies have to approve whatever we pass. And so, as we talked about this at the, at the task force meetings, it really was trying to find the common ground between the approaches we were taking. And it should be noted, and it's just, this is no knock against them, but Lincoln was already down the road of adopting ordinances. They were already essentially halfway done. So the die was essentially cast that they were gonna go with four uses. And so, we had to come to some determination on what do you do about that? And it also should be noted that in the county, including in the joint jurisdictional area, the county has the licensing authority, and the license contemplates all four uses. So, if, if we were only to allow the two, if we could come to that agreement, they would then have to essentially have like a two-tier licensing system, which would be complicated. So, we essentially, staff working together, they're allowing the four uses. The 1,000 feet is pretty consistent. The 1,000 feet came out of the, the task force, and the 500 feet that we have for the conditional use option came essentially after, with some council discussion, kind of at the 11th hour, so that's why that's not, not here. I'm not sure what the, what that particular commission would feel about the implications if they went from a permitted use to making it a conditional use. They did have a, I do remember, they did have a discussion about it, and every license would have to be approved, so I think one of the things they felt was that there would be the public input there. So, in many, there's a lot of similarities, there's a few differences, but again, it just reflects the reality that in the real world, when you have three different bodies, which we had at that task force, and you're talking about something like 18 different elected officials, you're probably gonna have 18 different opinions on where you should land on this. But I think it's, it's a, it's a good compromise, kind of with what the direction Lincoln's going, and what we're trying to do of being reasonably prudent. And I'm very, also very well aware that I would much rather have something that I'm not completely happy with than nothing, and have the wild, wild west in the joint area. So, thanks.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Other discussion on item 57 here, Counsel? All right, see, oh, Counselor Brecky, go ahead.
I just, I guess I just want to make a couple final comments, and one is, you know, I, I take it to heart when, you know, Mr. Reeserfer testified about, you know, the open communication and the collaborative feel that he got with working with Lincoln County. And when we talk about breathing life into an initiative, you know, it, it, I guess one of the things that troubles me a little bit is that, you know, we have the. is that, you know, we have the drafter and we have not really given that individual audience. How can you breathe life into something that she wrote and then not really have a forum to talk to her? I'll just one more time make a pitch for having a regulatory committee meeting and opening up that dialogue a little bit. And then as far as the joint jurisdictional area, I, I mean, I'm glad that, you know, there's going to be, an opening of the cultivation and the manufacture, you know, in an area that's close to the city. But I, I would add that I really would like us to consider, um, opening that up in Sioux Falls, if not initially, um, rather quickly. Because I do, do agree with the one citizen who testified that, you know, the industrial parks that we have are the, probably the safest, securest, you know, readily available places to handle that, those entities. And, you know, it, to, to just, you know, deny them that, um, it'll make the cost of the product go up and everything else by having it farther away, because obviously Sioux Falls being the largest city, there is going to be, whatever the demand is, it's going to be larger because it's in Sioux Falls. And so keeping the cost down and having that available is something, if we can't consider it now, I hope people keep an open mind to taking a quick look at that, um, in the not-too-distant future.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Any final discussion from any other Counselors here tonight on this one? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote on item 57.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
All right, that one passes seven to zero. We'll move ahead to item 59.
Item 59 is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 40, Administrative Code Enforcement. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. Sponsor is the mayor.
Stacy, I'll give you the floor on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is a proposed ordinance that, uh, as I referenced earlier, uh, 40.999 is a section that allows for civil penalties and state law provides for that opportunity. So when you look at 40.999, it's essentially a table of contents in that these are the ordinances, uh, which permit, uh, the imposition of civil penalties, if appropriate, and thus, uh, city ordinance 121. The licensing ordinance we described, uh, discussed at length tonight, uh, is now included within this ordinance.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone here to speak on, uh, item 59? All right, Counsel, uh, you have any questions for city attorney on this one?
Move to approve.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 7th. Any discussion here? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
All right, that one passes seven to zero. Now we'll move to item 61.
Item 61 is a resolution dissolving tax increment district number seven. Sponsor is the mayor.
Jeff, you're still here?
Yeah, I'm still waiting to.
All right.
Jeff Eckhart, Planning and Development Services. Uh, this is a resolution to develop TIF number seven, uh, which is the Minnesota Center where First Bank and Trust is. It was, uh, actually a site of a killer Pontiac dealership. TIF was to do some demo and some utility work, as well as remediation of some soil. Uh, the TIF was in 2007 and paid off in 14 years.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public like to speak on 61? All right, Counselors, you got any questions for Jeff on this? All right, look for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second, Sale.
Motion by Kylie, seconded by Sale to approve 61. Any discussion there? Let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Move to 64.
Item 64 is a resolution authorizing the city of Sioux Falls to gift the hockey dasher board system from the Denny Sanford Premier Center to the city of Brandon. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Tonight is a resolution to donate the dasher boards from the, uh, Denny Sanford Premier Center to the city of Brandon, which will be used by the Brandon Valley Hockey Association. So, uh, the city replaced the dasher boards in the, in the premier center here recently. And, uh, really, we looked at the, the trade-in value of these dasher boards with the manufacturer and what we were going to get for them really isn't what we feel that they're worth. They're worth a lot more to other local organizations than, uh, the $20,000 that they offered us for them. So, again, um, brought the issue up. Uh, there was a, a group looking for them and, and again, um, with your support, we can move those dasher boards over to the city of Brandon so they can donate them to the Brandon Valley Hockey Association.
Perfect. Thanks, Scott. Anyone from the public want to speak on item 64? All right, Counselors, you got any questions for Scott on this one? Counselor Sale, go ahead.
Scott, are we getting any free ice time in return?
I can't guarantee that, but, uh, you know, they're in the process of building their new indoor facility. They're, and this donation will get them a long ways down the road, um, not having to buy new dasher boards. So it gets them ever closer to putting that shovel in the ground.
Well, we'll, we'll trust you for those negotiations.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Look for a motion to approve item 64.
So moved.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen to approve this one. Any discussion on it, Counsel? All right, let's take a vote here.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. On to 65.
Item 65 is a resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and local 814 of the International Association of Firefighters. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Ryan. I would, uh, just like to point out, our city attorney has a conflict with, uh, with the collective bargaining agreement. So he'll step out for that. Ryan will be presenting these, and if you have questions of legal expertise, Ryan's your guy. So, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, Ryan Sage from the city attorney's office. Before you have five resolutions, essentially items 65 through 69, items 65 and 66. Our agreements that we've reached with the respective unions on wage reopeners, uh, given the uncertain times last year. A couple of highlights of the first item, item 65 is fire. We reached a two-and-a-half percent COLA for 2022 and a 3% COLA for 2023. Our market data indicates we're starting to lag a little bit with the fire wages, and so they also include a 1% wage adjustment for each year. So 2% over the course of that contract. Uh, we changed a minor calculation in the holiday leave language based on their 24 hours of schedules, as opposed to eight, and then shortened the probationary time. Uh, that's essentially the agreements that will reach labor peace, provided this body votes favorably through 2023 with that body. Bo Mortensen and, uh, Mr. Schoens were present earlier. Uh, given the length of the meeting, I advised them, and they're probably going to be up early working tomorrow, that I hope this body wouldn't hold it against them if they went home a little bit early. So, thank you for your consideration. We'd ask for your support.
All right, thank you, Ryan. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 65? Counselors, you have any questions for, uh, for Ryan on this? Counselor Sale, go ahead.
Yes, I assume there was a, a union membership vote and they voted for this package?
They did. That's the only reason we could get them to you, and they did vote for it and support it, and it was a, a great labor session for negotiations.
All right, other questions for Ryan on this agreement?
Move to approve.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Counselor Sale, seconded by Kylie to approve 65. Any final discussion here? All right, let's vote on this one.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
That one passes seven to zero. Item 66.
Item 66 is a resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and local 519 of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening again. This is the AFSMI agreement. Present, still with us are Jason Ness, Jason Wertz, and Tanner Corbin, who are part of that AFSMI group. It was, again, a pleasure to negotiate with them. Everything stayed professional and cordial. Uh, the highlights of that agreement through the wage reopener include the same COLA, 2% for 2022 and 3% for 2023. Uh, the other economics to note are the standby pay, uh, apparently hadn't increased in, since 2014. Uh, and so we did make an adjustment to that to increase the standby wages from $220 this year to $250 in 2022 and $280 in 2023. Uh, with respect to the 24-hour rate, that went from $25 to $35 next year and $40 in 2023. The only other minor change to that was to allow the AFSMI group to post union notifications on insight, as opposed to everything being paper copies. So kind of catching up a little bit with technology for them to communicate with their members. Again, I would ask for your support, and we'd reach labor peace through 2023 with this organization as well.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Ryan. Thanks to the AFSMI leadership for sticking around, fellas. Uh, anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors, you have any questions for Attorney Sage on this one?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Starr?
Thank you, Mr. Sage. I guess I'm confused. We did a COLA increase over two years for the firefighters, but we didn't for AFSMI. Will there be COLAs then for the rest of the groups, or?
Maybe I misspoke. For AFSMI, we did reach the same COLA, two-and-a-half percent for 2022.
Thank you, that's what I thought we.
And three for 2023. So it is the same COLA for both entities.
Perfect, thank you.
Other questions for Ryan on this one?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Kylie to approve item 66. Any final discussion here? Let's vote on it.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
All right, that one passes seven to zero. Item 67.
Item 67 is a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding to the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and local 519 of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Sponsor is the mayor.
All right.
Good evening. Uh, items 67, 68, and 69 are all very similar, just with respect to the three different labor groups. After we'd reached a tentative agreement with the union membership, uh, we then, uh, had the federal recognition of Juneteenth Day. The state then followed suit. As you heard in item 46, the city ordinance has addressed the non-union employees. These three resolutions simply add Juneteenth Day, uh, in recognition of that June 19th, 1865 date for our membership, uh, union membership employees, and so we'd ask for your su- support for that as well.
Thanks, Ryan. Anyone want to speak to this item? All right, Counselors, uh, any questions here? Can I get a motion on it?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion? Let's vote on this one.
Councilmembers Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
All right, that one passes seven to zero. 68.
Item 68 is a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding to the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and local 814 of the International Association of Firefighters. Sponsor is the mayor.
Nothing further than present.
Same one. You bet. Anyone want to speak to this one? All right, Counselors, can I get a motion on this one?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie on that. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
That one passes seven, zero, and 69.
Item 69 is a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding to the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and the Sioux Falls Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 1LC. Sponsor is the mayor.
Same story. Anyone from the public want to speak on this? Same benefit for the cops.
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen. Let's take a vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
That one passes seven to zero. Move to item 70.
Item 70 is a resolution advising and giving consent to the appointment of members to the Southeastern Council of Government, CCOG, Board of Directors, and Urbanized Development Commission, UDC. Counsel, sponsors, Councilmembers Sale and Jensen.
All right, are you going to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the council leadership is going to make these appointments pending your approval. For the CCOG, Councilmember Sale and Starr with Jim David as the alternate. The UDC, Councilmembers Brecky, Kylie, Knightsert, Starr, David Bixler, and Jim David as the alternates. I ask for your approval.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Anyone want to speak to this item tonight? All right, let's get a motion, please.
I so moved.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen. Do you guys have any discussion on this one? Well, let's vote on it then.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
All right, that one passes seven to zero. Item 71.
Item 71 is a resolution declaring certain property of the city surplus and approving inspection and salvage agreements. Sponsor is the mayor.
Hey, Matt.
Good evening, Counsel. Um, Matt Tobias, Planning and Development Services. This is a resolution declaring these, uh, two homes here as surplus, and which the two homes will be moved off the site for the public training, uh, public training facility. Uh, they'll be moved off-site by CCOG, um, and they're going to be moved with the grass signs addition. Fire Chief McRavie is here as well to ask you any questions.
All right. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item tonight? All right, Counsel, you have any questions for, uh, Chief McRavie or Matt? Look for a motion on it.
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Sale and seconded by Jensen to approve 71. Any discussion here? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
All right, that one passes seven to zero. Next item?
Next item is 72, Notice of Transfer of Appropriations on the Memorandum dated July 31st, 2021.
All right, any new business to consider tonight, Counsel? All right, let's move to public input. Just a reminder, input will last three minutes per person and should cover items we didn't talk about earlier in the agenda. So anyone for public input tonight, general public input?
Hello again. I'm still at David's Alkitas, and every now and again, I think about stuff, I get new ideas, so I have to come back and make addendums and corrections. So I have to come back and make addendums and corrections. That's why I'm here tonight. So a few months ago, I talked about how to make city life a little quieter and a little more peaceful. I also talked about noise causing stress, driving people bonkers, and shortening life expectancy. You can fix some of these problems if you decide you want to first. Here's some loud city noises. If you think a train horn is loud at about 100 decibels, you haven't heard a pile driver yet. Really loud, really obnoxious. I live at the Riverside area. Greg Nightcert's familiar with that. I grew up there. And I heard this contraption going at Smithfield. And that's about what it sounds like. So. Sound effects just for jollies. And that's a pile driver. But it can go on for a long while and a lot higher volume. Now, if you don't like, if you don't like all the noise from a pile driver, you can get the contraption like this, basically a big portable box. Wrap it around your pile driver and life is a lot quieter. 30-decibel noise reduction is a big deal if you live half a mile away from a pile driver and you don't hear it anymore. So my recommendation is to use these things and make sure that the city noise ordinance applies to pile drivers so that you can inform construction companies of the new policy and enforce your city noise ordinance and have a more pleasant city. We have a bonus landscape here. This is Lake Alvin, and it's a great place to go swimming. And good evening.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for public input? Come on up.
Hello, Kathy Griffler here again. I want to change the subject topics. Downtown, we have a big problem with the Bishop Dudley House, the way they're taking care of people and the way they are not taking care of people. I also am addressing sex offenses, sex trafficking. I have people coming to me needing a shelter, needing to get away from the dirty badges that we have in town. If you like it or not, it's true. It's real. Also, we have dirty sheriff's badges. We also have dirty FBI badges. You don't believe me? Check the internet. The guy that just retired from the FBI head has now been charged with sex trafficking, et cetera. I would like to know what our city is going to do about it. I have been in this town for 30 years. I did not know sex trafficking is as bad as it is. I put myself on the line out there downtown every day and every night. Therefore, if I have to carry a weapon and I'm being threatened, I'm going to use it. But I can't very well do that because I'm on housing. There's rules and regulations, et cetera, et cetera. So I have to go down there boldly the way I am. We have crooked veterans down there that are taking part in sex trafficking. And I can prove everything I'm saying. So I request, along with a lot of other people in our city, and for those that can't be here, that y'all step up and find some clean badges and let's clean this city up. Y'all want to say that we're in the top 5, 10 of the best cities in the United States. We got the cleanest place around. We got more money out here, et cetera. Then why haven't you done something about keeping our people safe? Just because they're homeless doesn't mean they should be treated like dirt. I've got a 21-year-old girl downtown. She came to me for help. She found out what was going to be required of her, and she got out of the car and she took off running. She is so scared. They beat you. They drug you. They even dump you out of a car. I was at the sheriff's deputy office, mentioned about a girl. I come out of the office, went downtown. 20 minutes later, this girl was being literally dumped out of a white car. She had no shirts, only a bra, kind of a bandana over her top. And her bottom was a dirty short shorts cut off. She was hysterical. She was in fear. She was crying. And the minute that they seen her talking to me, a guy goes over and grabs her. Well, I'll tell you the truth, I haven't seen her since. So I also followed a vehicle with someone trying to let you know they were in the trailer. Well, of course, we didn't have no cops in that area, so that didn't go very far. But I just asked to
Thanks, Catherine.
Help out with this sex trafficking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Stephen Ciano. And certainly, I've been here before and I've been critical of what you've done. And I feel that you're, you've been making it really hard on me as a disabled veteran to come in here and complain. I wish you would make some kind of arrangements to facilitate that. Wish that would be possible. I have been afforded the the ability to call into the county commission. And I would like you to change your ways to allow that to be done because it creates quite too much difficulty for me. I have a couple spinal injuries. I got other physical as well as mental issues. And I just had a physical therapist from the VA come to my place. You know, certainly if the VA can make accommodations to send people to my apartment to take care of me because I can't get around, that this body should do the same. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for public input tonight? Come on up.
All right, I'm tired and want to go home too, so I'll be very quick. I have a very specific request. Obviously, I'm very interested in the cannabis issue. I'm sorry if at times it seems tense. There's passion. We all want to get it right. So as we talk about collaboration, building relationships, letting this evolve, I would like to ask the City of Sioux Falls, we have 40-some commissions and boards. I think it would really behoove the whole process to have some type of commission or board that is dedicated to cannabis as an issue in Sioux Falls. This is one of the biggest issues, I think, that's been thrown on your lap by the voters. So it is a lot of work. You only have so many hours in the day. I can't expect all of you to do all of that. So I think putting stakeholders, you know, obviously I'd love to participate. I've done it in Colorado for two municipalities. I've seen this work across the country where you have a commission, industry, patients, government, city staff, police chief, fire marshal, whoever needs to be there that makes sense. It's an ongoing discussion with recreational coming, with concerns, with the current ordinance. And that's my idea. So you heard me speak at length today about a lot of things. I think that's a good next step. I would feel a heck of a lot happier knowing the city recognizes the importance of this issue and bringing people together for those discussions. So I'm very hopeful. And just to clarify, I do want to see these ordinances passed. I have criticisms. I have concerns. I think ultimately, if it's really bad, we have the initiative and referendum process, but we're hoping not to go that route. I think you've got three weeks to go through that regulatory committee and get into the weeds, get it fixed on some of those concerns. I do ultimately want to see it pass. I think if you have a permanent commission or board that works on it, we'll have an outlet to engage the city and to continue coming back with advice to improve it. Hopefully, it doesn't turn into initiatives. Hopefully, it doesn't turn into more news articles with he said, she said, whatever. I love Sioux Falls. I think you guys know that. That's why I started the petty cap business. That's why I'm here. It's why I was in Pierre 10 years ago. And just trying to, and I'm sorry if it became tense. I don't think it should be personal. I think we should have collaborative engagement. I've always, you know, felt like it could have been more engaging, I guess. And that's where I think that the improvement to that is, let's create a commission and a board. I'll show up to every meeting and other folks can too. And we can come back with recommendations and hopefully get a better policy. And I look forward to working together. And I do want to see the ordinances passed. Like to see some changes, but we'll work on those changes hopefully in time. So thank you for listening to me multiple times tonight.
Yeah, you bet. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else for general public input tonight? All right, I want to adjourn us out. Look for a motion for that.
We'll do adjourn. Second.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.